The council first order of your allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Blanchett.
I can make a motion to move the presentation of awards number eight right after number five, the city managers' report.
So a motion to move item eight to number after number five, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor unanimous, we'll move eight after five. Counselor Miller.
I'd like to make a motion to change the date on item thirteen from June eighth, 2021 to June fourteenth, 2022.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. All right. Item three, rules of order, we follow Roberts Rules of Order and then any other rules that we might adopt during the organization planning meeting. Item four, adoption of Ellsworth City Council meetings, two fourteen, 2022, regular council meeting.
I make a motion to accept the matter.
Second.
A motion of seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item five, city managers' report.
Thank you, Chair Hamilton. So just a couple of quick announcements and then a couple more lengthy announcements that I'll try to be quick with, just to let folks know that Streetsweeping has begun. So you should be checking the city website for specifics on updated scheduling for your area. Also, just wanted to make a quick announcement that as of yesterday, the, excuse me, as of Friday, the basketball courts have been open for the season. So sure sign that spring is upon us, at least we'd like to think so. So just a couple of other quick announcements, just have a little bit more detail to them, but I'm very pleased to announce that the city is sponsoring a donation drive for items need needed desperately in the Ukraine. So the city of Ellsworth is providing a collection point for those seeking to donate supplies to displaced people in Ukraine. The donated items will be transported and shipped overseas by New Day, a New Hampshire-based nonprofit organization. The city is accepting these donations to be dropped off during the normal business hours or after hours and weekends at the Ellsworth Fire Department, which is downstairs here at City Hall. Items will be collected through 8:00 PM on Thursday, March 24th. Monetary donations are also accepted online at, and the www.nuday, N-U-D-A-Y, syria, S-Y-R-I-A.org backslash Ukraine, or via mail at post office box 521 Wyndham, New Hampshire, 03087. Other needed items include generators, solar chargers and flashlights, food such as baby food, canned items, dried goods, granola bars and so on. Other items and supplies are listed on the city of Ellsworth webpage and at ellsworthmain.gov backslash Ukraine. New Day requests items to be new, unexpired and not packaged in glass. New Day also has a list of its most needed items on amazon.com/ukrainemergency list. For more information about the collection, you can feel free to contact City Hall, specifically Jana Richards or Elena Puket. And the second announcement that I'd like to make is also something that is, I'm excited to announce, that the Ellsworth Police Department, in conjunction with Healthy Acadia and with the good graces of Helen's Restaurant, will be hosting a tip a cop fundraising event on Monday, April 11th at 5:00 to 7:00 PM to raise funds for our Down East Project Hope. For those of you who may or may not be familiar with Project Hope, it's a heroin-based prevention effort. It's a police-led initiative and a community-wide effort that works to connect area residents seeking treatment with recovery resources and treatment they need locally and/or out of state. We initiated the program in 2016 and at this point, our funding, which has come in the forms of local donations and private donations, as well as grant funding, has reached a point where there's not a lot left. So we're looking for folks to come out and enjoy enjoy a good meal with some probably not-so-great service and donate to a very, a very worthy cause. If you'd like to learn more about Project Hope, you can connect with the Ellsworth Police Department or contact Tracy Crossman at Healthy Acadia. And if you'd like to make a financial contribution to Project Hope and are unable to attend Helen's, you can always do that at the Ellsworth Police Department or through Healthy Acadia. So those are my two items that I wanted to report out on. And then real quickly, I just want to circle back around on an issue that Counselor O'Halloran had brought forward regarding excise tax, just to let the citizens know and also Mr. O'Halloran, that we followed up after that conversation with the Bureau of Motor Vehicles to do a little research into the issue and hopefully bring some some closure as to what transpired and bring the excise tax income back here to the city of Ellsworth. And through that transaction and through that communication with the Motor Bureau of Motor Vehicles, we found that all of the applications listed on the mailing, had a mailing address of PO Box 592 in Ellsworth, and these are the vehicles registered to Mr. O'Halloran under the business of PE O'Halloran, Inc. All vehicles registered listed the same Ellsworth mailing address but gave a legal residence of 81 McCaw Road in Hamden. So as a result, there was some more research put into that address, the meaning of that address and the specifics around the collection of excise tax. And according to Title 36, Part Two, Chapter 111, subsection 1484, Place of Payment 3-C, "The excise tax on a motor vehicle owned by a corporation or a partnership must be paid to the place in which the owner's registered or main office is located, except that if the owner has an additional payment, excuse me, additional permanent place of business where motor vehicle are customary kept, the taxes on these vehicles must be paid to the place where the permanent place of business is located." Through the research, the inspector was contacted the Bureau of Corporation Elections and Commissions and inquired about the most current address used by PE O'Halloran, Inc. and found that the corporation address is listed as being physically located at 525 Bangor Road in Ellsworth with a PO Box of 592 in Ellsworth, the same as listed on the title application submitted by the business. He was unable to find any specific business, place of business for PE O'Halloran listed in Hamden. So as a result of all that, the good news is Mr. O'Halloran has recently registered two vehicles in Ellsworth, I'm assuming without any complication or problem.
It went beautiful.
And going forward, there is recourse for the city of Ellsworth within three years from the date of excise tax levied under the authority of this paragraph, a municipality, county or motor vehicle owner that feels the excise tax has been improperly levered may request a determination of this question by the state assess, excuse me, state tax assessor. So the city, we will be following up on that request and seeing what, if any monies we can recover from the town of Hamden that should rightfully have been paid here to the city of Ellsworth. And that concludes my report, sir.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'd just like to say thank you for looking into that and making it available to me to register in my own town. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right. We'll now, we moved number eight up, so we'll now do the presentation of awards. And the first presentation goes to an individual that, and I hit this mic and I'm going to get in trouble. To individual who has really provided some outstanding service to Ellsworth for many, many years. So I want to call up John Fink. Let me read this. Presented to John Fink in grateful appreciation of more than 30 years of outstanding volunteer service to the city of Ellsworth, your generous and dedicated commitment to public service, fairness and integrity, wise planning and quick wit have contributed greatly to the improvement in the Ellsworth community at large. The city of Ellsworth Planning Board, these are the positions, April 1991 to October 1995, alternate member, October 1995 to December 1999, regular member, December 1999 to February 2022, Planning Board Chair, which is quite amazing, one to be on the planning board that long, but to chair it that long is even more impressive.
I've enjoyed that very much.
So thank you for all your service. And I have a official proclamation in recognition of Arbor Day. This is something that we have presented in the past and we're renewing that this year as well. A copy will be available to the public as needed, so that that's been signed. And then the MLEAP accreditation award presented by the Maine Chiefs of Police.
Good evening. My name is Jim Willis. I'm the police chief in Bar Harbor in Town of Mount Desert. I'm here representing the Maine Chiefs of Police Association. I used to be the president of it. And I'm currently the chairman of our MLEAP, which is the Main Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. A little bit about the program, it's a voluntary process which was developed by law enforcement professionals in Maine to assist agencies in the efficient and effective delivery of law enforcement services and the protection of individuals' rights. Accredited agencies reduce risk, liability and enjoy a 15% discount from our liability insurance carrier. MLEAP contains about 160 standards, depending on how the agency is run, contained in eight different chapters. Chapters include administration and organization, professional standards and conduct, training, personnel, records and information management, use of force, law enforcement operations, unusual situations, communications, processing and transportation, court security if it's applicable, and property and evidence management. The Ellsworth Police Department started preparing for their accreditation process more than two years ago. Their entire policy manual has been redone to fit the standards of our program. Officers had to be retrained, new procedures put into place. The Ellsworth Police Department is the fourth agency in the state of Maine to go through this process. It's quite an accomplishment. Formerly, Chief Moser formally signed up for the assessment for Ellsworth on November 4th of last year. They use a platform, software platform we call Power DMS, which really helps streamline the process. Much of the assessment was able to be done remotely by our assessors. Our assessors were here on site on February 22nd and everything went just beautiful. So on behalf of the Maine Chiefs of Police Association, I'm proud to present you with your accreditation status.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
We're going to pause there getting a picture.
Thanks, John.
We're just pausing while they get a picture. All right. Yep, the agenda's short. You're welcome. Okay. Committee reports. Any councilors attended any of the committees?
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Blanchett.
Attended the third and final meeting of the Local Roads Committee before we begin the budget process. That committee will be making a recommendation to the entire council amounting to 1.75 million in roads repair and maintenance this year, largest amount that we've ever offered up. And for all intents, it's still not a drop in the bucket. Costs have gone up tremendously, even in some cases finding crews, finding companies to even bid on the work, much less do it, is getting more and more difficult. But it was, certainly was driven into our head, the main thing that we have to pay attention to going forward is drainage. There's no sense in fixing the road on the surface if the drainage underneath it is inadequate because it will just fail. So we'll see how that goes in the, as we work our way through the budget process.
The councilors attended the committees? Counselor Miller and I attended the Recreation Commission and the Recreation Commission is going to be getting back to the process that they've used prior to the pandemic in terms of reviewing requests for funding for this year. So they're going to be having, they've sent out the information to all the entities that have submitted requests, asking them to participate in and present in person on April 12th for our five-minute presentation so that they can then make recommendations to the city council in terms of requests for recreational items. They also, in the meeting, they reviewed the parade and the tree lighting ceremony to look at what went well and where improvements could be made. So they're looking at some planning to start even earlier this year and to make that event or those events larger as they go forward. Anything else, sir? And the, the meeting will be now is taking place on the third Tuesday at 6:00. Also want to present to the council for discussion and hopefully agreements to be able to schedule the budget workshops. What I'd like to propose, if Mondays work, let me just start with that as a general statement, do Mondays generally work for everyone at 6:00?
Absolutely.
Yes, okay. So if we schedule them starting April 25th and then follow all the Mondays, so it would be April 25th, May 2nd, May 9th, the 16th, we have a regular council meeting. And then we would resume the budget meetings on May 23rd and May 30th. We may not need the 30th in terms of all of it, but it would give us at least the two Mondays in June to wrap things up if we need to, but it would give us enough buffer that we can take our time, have thorough discussions, bring items back. So if we start on that April and plan to work all those Mondays, we can make adjustments as we go, but it certainly will give us enough time before we vote on the final budget at that, at our June meeting. Counselor.
Is there a way we could have that put in the outlook calendar?
Yes.
That's.
And what Manager Moser will do is then schedule the actual, by, once he has the dates, he'll look at which make, which groups make sense to, on which nights to present and to move that forward so that the school board is going to have to present earlier in the process. And so that will be on the docket and we'll just move forward if that works over. All right, okay. Then that's what we will do. Any other committees? All right. Citizens' comments. So this is part of the agenda where citizens can make comments. If it's, if there's an agenda item already listed, you'll have an opportunity at that time to talk about an agenda item. But any other items that you wish to speak to, you can. We are, this evening, obviously we have a lot of items, a lot of interest. We are limiting all comments this evening to three minutes. Counselor Miller will be timing that. When you reach three minutes, I'm going to say time's up. And so move to the, make it a period at the end of your, your last word. And, and that way we'll be able to treat everybody fairly. So we don't end up in a situation where somebody keeps going for another minute or so, we'll, we'll cut off at, at three minutes. When you speak, please introduce yourself and the town you're from. We'd like to have Ellsworth residents go first and then if you're not an Ellsworth resident, you can speak afterwards. So with that said, would anybody like to make citizens' comments?
Good evening, councilors. I'm John Linehan, live here in Ellsworth. I'd just like to make an observation. I'm 73 years old, was born here, lived here all my life, raised my family here, owned a lot of businesses through the years, a lot of real estate through the years, and I've talked with a bunch of business people over the last, well, probably I'd say two to three months. And I'm concerned that there's a very serious problem of overregulation in our community against the business community. I know we like to bill ourselves as being business friendly and all that, but from what I've observed from watching some of the things in the newspaper, what I've talked to people over there, I believe we're not business friendly, the way we used to be. And I would like to see us take a stand when things come in and we really look at ordinances closely. I don't think we need the ones we have, and I think we're overregulated and makes it very productive and hard for businesses to produce. Small businesses, the energy that drives our country, it's been the same here in Ellsworth. And I believe it's hurting our economy here, it's not providing jobs for young people, and I think it's crimping the tide. There's several areas I want to deal with, and I'm going to deal with the appropriate divisions personally on it. I want to be a good neighbor, I don't want to be a hard guy to get along with, but you know, I want to make sure that this is a good place, that my family is left now, one's in Indiana because of the Maine situation here, and one's in Bangor, but I'd like to see him come back to this community, make it the way it was when I was growing up. So that's my goal, and I'll be talking with different departments within the city of Ellsworth, again, as a good neighbor, not as a guy trying to be a jerk or give people a hard time. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Cara Romano. I'm the director of Heart of Ellsworth, our downtown organization. I'm here very quickly this evening to make councilors and the attending residents here in Ellsworth aware of a project that we're working on called asset mapping. We're working to sort of assess the downtown assets, potential gaps and opportunities in our community. And this study that we're working on is very focused on the downtown. We are working in concert with Franklin Savings Bank, Main Community Foundation, of course, Heart of Ellsworth and the city of Ellsworth to bring a organization, a group here called Hub Collective. And the project is to, the project goal is to set a strategic direction for Heart of Ellsworth, the city of Ellsworth and downtown businesses. We're looking to align current programs that are entrepreneurial-based, that Heart of Ellsworth operates, and to make those sort of line up nicely with revitalization projects that are happening in and around the downtown district. We're really looking to sort of highlight the entrepreneurship programming that we have been working on for the past few years and to sort of really figure out how we are able to arise from the COVID-related issues that have come for small businesses as well as community members. We are really looking to foster stability and growth and to meet the ever-evolving needs of both the business and the community here in Ellsworth. From April 13th to the 15th, Hub Collective will make a visit here to downtown Ellsworth, and the title of the workshops are called Manifesting Maine. We're including onsite visits to downtown businesses and we're hosting a variety of discussion-based community groups to collect data and information on what folks want to see in the next five to 10 years of their downtown. So we're looking to capture clear, common vision and to sort of create an approach that's going to serve everyone in identifying, as I said earlier, the assets and potential gaps in our community. And we're trying to make our downtown, that's already wonderful, sort of even more of a welcoming place for businesses and community. And then we'll be trying to figure out how we can turn some of those deficits into assets for our community. The end product is that we'll be creating a tool that is both engaging, easy to understand and helpful for all levels of decision-making that's involving the downtown Ellsworth community. And the concept is to really have this activity be a preamble to the 2023 comprehensive plan that is slated to happen next year. Each of the councilors, I gave you a three-page packet that had both the press release as well as a lot more detailed information about the study. And the last piece of exciting news is this concept that I just put in front of you is the first phase, the second phase.
Karen, time.
Okay, thank you.
See, and that's how you put a period on the? Thank you.
I have a feeling I'm being cut off too, but, hi, my name is Tabitha White. I'm a certified arborist and a Green Ellsworth and garden club volunteer. I'm here today in anticipation of the proclamation being signed for Arbor Day, and we wanted to thank the city council for signing that and kind of share what are some of the accomplishments we've done over the past couple of years. We, let's see here, in 2021, we, actually Ruth Foster of the garden club member raised over $16,000 and did the, for individual and commercial donations to support the tree pruning, replanting and landscaping around City Hall. And city manager Moser's support for this effort was a really important part of the process. In November, Lisa and Adam of the Public Works Department, along with a crew or a volunteer crew from Green Ellsworth, the garden club and the community, did a pilot planting program of eight maple trees across from the McDonald's on High Street. Those 16 volunteers who came out at 8:00 AM on a cold November morning went raving or left raving about how great the process went and was really eager to do more tree plantings here in the future. Also in 2021, the Frenchman Bay Conservancy broke ground on a new community tree nursery that will allow us to buy smaller trees for a much cheaper price and grow them on to ensure that we have better quality and success with plants or trees when they get planted out in our community. The ground at the Jordan Homestead Preserve was prepared and amended and posts for protective fencing were set in anticipation of planting the first 80 trees in the nursery that will happen this spring, which will be our Arbor Day event the last Friday of April. Working on this planting will be volunteers from the Frenchman Bay Conservancy, the Ellsworth Garden Club, Green Ellsworth, Down East Trout Unlimited, and teachers and students from the Ellsworth Elementary School. On the strength of all this work, our community now qualifies to be recognized by Tree City USA, and Green Ellsworth has developed the application for us to receive that designation shortly, which includes signs that we get to post all over our city. So we wanted to thank again the city of Ellsworth and our partners and donors and volunteers for being able to achieve that this year. So thank you. And.
And you had 40 seconds.
Oh, my God. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Just come on over here, I'll pass them down.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else?
working with me to get that problem solved so I can register or pay excise in the town that I live in. The second point, I'd like to remind everybody in this room, every citizen, every committee member, every council member, is every dollar we spent, somebody somewhere had to earn a dollar and 34 cents, had approximately 25 cents, 25% taken from their check. They net a dollar, they brought that to City Hall, and they gave it to City Hall. They still don't have any money themselves. I'd just like to point that out, that every dollar we spent, somebody somewhere had to earn a dollar 34. Thank you.
My name is Gwen Clark, and I'm used to getting gavelled down even before I start, so this will be a new experience. I'm here addressing the Ellsworth City Council to encourage the councilors to hold the school board to a standard of transparency and accountability, to the City of Ellsworth, to the taxpayers, and to the parents of the, and the Ellsworth Schools children. The Ellsworth Schools receive money from numerous surrounding communities for those communities to have a school for those communities' childrens to attend. And not only does Ellsworth get this money, but for the past two years, Ellsworth Schools have received $20 million in Esser funds. $20 million. This money is not included in the school budgets, in either amounts. What was purchased or how it was spent, Ellsworth students have been behind in state standards for over three years. 20% of that money is to be used to bring students up to the learning level. There is no transparency within the school budget. Taxpayers and parents should know where or how this money was put to use. And the City Council has the ability to bring these funds to the light of the city. They got $4 million in the first Esser funds, $16 million in the second Esser funds, and our students are still behind. I have one more thing. The rainbow crosswalks. I have friends and relatives in the LG BT.
That's going to, that's on an agenda item, so you can speak at that time on that item.
Okay.
All right. And you'll have three minutes.
Okay.
For that.
All right. Thanks.
Anyone else like to make citizens' comments? Seeing none, we move on. The consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine, will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members so request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item nine, council order number 032100, reservation of the City of Ellsworth's right to harvest allies. Number 10, council order number 032101, request of the tax collector for approval of a real estate purchase installment contract between the City of Ellsworth and Peter Cabanillis. Item 11, council order number 032102, request of the tax collector to release properties redeemed during the 30-day redemption period ending March 15th, 2022, through quitclaim deeds. The complete list is available in the City Clerk's office and authorize the city manager to release said properties through municipal quitclaim deeds. Item 12, acceptance of the resignation of Planning Board Member John Fink. Item 13, council order number 032103, request of the city manager to hold a special municipal school budget validation referendum election on June 14th, 2021, for the purpose of validating the school budget. And item 14, council order number 032104, promotion of Molly Friedland from alternate to regular planning board member. Would any council members like to remove any of those items? Oh, I misspoke. On item 13, let me just read it again, council order number 032103, request of the city manager to hold a special municipal school budget validation referendum election on June 14th, 2022, for the purpose of validating the school budget. Thank you, Councilman Miller.
Move of approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in, oh, council length.
Number 10, installment contract. Do we sell somebody some land, precious? What land is?
No, so that, so that's, is Sue here?
I am.
Sue is probably better suited. It's a repick, correct?
It's a repick, yeah. And it's, it's, it's just allowing this person to pay off their taxes.
Very good.
All right. Motion a second. Any other discussion?
And the person that's going to, Molly Friedland, is she here?
Yes.
Oh.
Hi.
So you're already an alternate?
I am.
And you're just going to move up full-time?
It's a regular voting planning board member, yes.
And how long does that, does that go, like, until November, when you have an election to elect somebody, or?
The, it's an appointed position, so it gets reappointed annually by the, by the council. You have to stay for 30 years on there. That's, that's a new rule. All right. Motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. New business. Item 15, public hearing in action on the issuance of business licenses. Madam Clerk, is everything in order?
All except for the last one, Morse LLC DBA tags. Theirs has not been inspected yet. It is slated for this week, so should you approve that, it will be conditional on your approval and the passing of their COVID fire inspection, I think, Thursday. Would not be issued if they did not pass that inspection.
So in terms of approving that, we should add language at that time, a motion to conditional. Okay.
Should we amend it to include that language on the actual order?
Yes, when we get to it, somebody will need to, to make that. All right. So, public hearing. The Eagles Lodge Incorporated, 278 High Street, for renewal of a city lodging house license. This is a public meeting, so I'll open the public meeting. Public meeting is open. Would anybody like to make a comment? I thought they, I was all excited, first time someone said a comment on a public. All right, close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Any comments?
Move of approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion a second. All in favor? Unanimous. Colonial One LLC DBA, Colonial Inn, 321 High Street, for renewal of a city lodging house license. It's a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody like to make a comment? I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval?
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Asset Management Incorporated, DBA Riverside Cafe, 151 Main Street, for renewal of a city Class C license, Victoria and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, 4 malt, spiritus, and vinous liquor license. It's a public hearing, open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Any comments? Public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman? Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Ellsworth Moose Lodge, number 2698, 47 Foster Street, renewal of a city Class B license, amusement pool tables, liquor, and victular, and renewal of a state Class V club without catering malt, spiritus, and vinous liquor license. It's a public hearing, open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval?
Second.
Motion a second. All those, or, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Josie's Country Store, DBA Josie's Country Store, 126 Surrey Road, for renewal of a city Class C license, Victoria liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, and 4 malt liquor, wine, and spirits liquor license. This is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody wish to comment? Public hearing is closed.
Move approval of Josie's, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Morse LLDBA tags, sports bar for renewal of a city Class A license, amusement liquor, arcade, and victular, and renewal of a state Class 11 restaurant lounge malt, spiritus, and vinous liquor. It's a public hearing, public hearing is open. Public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve with the addition of approval contingent on passing inspection on Thursday.
Wait a call. Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any discussion?
I want to know who Grandpa Snoopy is.
Don't know. All those in favor? Item 16, council order number 032105, request of the Public Works Director to extend the contract for center and sideline striping and authorize the city manager to sign the contract.
Good evening, all. Lisa Cyclich, Public Works Director. I've got a few of the next ones on the agenda, so let's get on it. So this one is, I'm asking, as usual every year, to extend the contract for Taluka Striping to do our long lines, so that's the skips and the double yellows and the white long lines throughout the city. They've done it for years, since before I've been here, and they would like to continue it with a, an increase this year due to the cost of materials, which has increased significantly over previous years.
Action.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve as presented.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item 17, council order number 032106, request of the Public Works Director to extend the contract for marking words, symbols, stop bars, parking lines, crosswalks, and authorize the city manager to sign the contract.
Same type of thing, except this time it's our stop bars, our crosswalks, our onlys and arrows citywide. We had a contract, or we put it out for RFP last year, and with the potential to extend it for an additional two years, one year at a time, and so I'm asking at this time to extend it with new and ground effects, with, again, a price increase due to material costs over previous years.
Questions?
Lisa, with this 25% price increase, have you looked at doing any vinyl on any of the crosswalks, arrows?
Yeah, the, as we discussed last time, it would be almost double, the cost to do the.
But their, but their life is at least double, if not triple?
Depending upon the condition of the roadway in which you put them on.
The crosswalks downtown?
Yep.
Right now, they're gone.
Correct. So there's a couple of things to keep in mind, the price, there's a whole number of things. Last year, I don't know if any of you remember, there was a shortage of urea because of the Texas plants that got frozen. There was some catastrophic frozen, freezing thing down in Texas, which caused problems with getting paint, so there was a paint shortage last year, including the DOT that didn't get a lot of things painted last year. So he painted with what he could get last year, not necessarily what we would want, but what he could get. This year, he is looking at using a better quality product in hopes that it would last longer, and then there's also the option of doing touch-up paints in the fall for certain areas that have worn off. You know, if certain high-traffic areas are worn off and we want to redo them, we can do them a second time if we would like.
What would be the problem with putting in one, two, three, four of them as a test?
So here's the problem, if we do two, three, four of them, your price per each is going to be extraordinary. If you're going to bring them up here, you have to, there are only two companies that can do it. One of them's out of Vermont, I believe, and then the other one is out of north of Bangor. I can't think of where it is. So there is one reasonably close. Problem is, is we are small compared to the cities and towns that they do these kinds of things for, the DOT. To get them here, it's going to cost us a lot of money. If we're going to get them here and pay the money to get them here, you might as well do enough that it makes sense to, there's a mobilization cost, right?
Mm-hmm.
So if you're going to mobilize and pay that mobilization cost, you might as well have them do a handful of them, or more than a handful of them, I'm sorry.
But we don't know until we try, rather than paying.
Problem also being marked is that if we go that option, I'm not sure how quickly I'm going to get them here at this point in time. So we could be waiting till June or July, and I don't think we want to do that.
Then, might I suggest, then, if we want to run a test and the time is going to be shaky, let's try it up on the walking path. For instance, the crossing behind EBS.
Right, but that's not going to give you a true test to what they can endure. The walking path doesn't have the vehicle or traffic that's going to show you the longevity of it. I think it, it wouldn't be worth it, it wouldn't be a good.
We have to try something sometime, and if we put it, when we put it down in mid to late May, if we're lucky, by September, they're pretty much gone. And if we can get the vinyl, the inlaid vinyl to last a couple of years and be able to be seen, whether it's a stop bar, whether it's a crosswalk, an arrow, whatever, year-round, and only have to do it every other year, for instance, to me, that's a win-win. And I, I think we'd be remiss not to try it. That, the company north of Bangor.
They won't even return my calls. When I called them, the only people that returned my calls was the one in Vermont.
Well, I have a phone, too. I know how to call them.
Counselor Captain.
Is this, is this price going to change at all depending on what we decide for item number 23?
No, I mean, it'll be one less crosswalk, but it's pennies and pennies on the dollar, essentially.
Well, no, he could be, he could be doing the white anyway.
Oh, yeah, he would still do the white. Yes, you're right. Sorry.
What question?
So, like, they're wiped away now, it's because they used, like, an inferior paint last year, obviously, right? So how long do they usually last?
They're going to get, they're going to get wiped out every winter, no matter what.
And if we use vinyl with the plows going over them and everything else?
Vinyl with the plows, the difference is, is their ground, they grind out the pavement and they're inset, so the plows, the plows will have a couple of years where they're scraping. I mean, every year you lose an eighth to a quarter of an inch of pavement, depending on how much we're scraping the ground every year. So depending upon the year and how much plowing we do, at some point, we will be scraping off the plastics. And the problem, and the discussion I had with the people from Vermont, is that when you do these plastic inlays, they normally do them when you have brand-new pavement, because everything's smooth, everything's level, they come in, they grind everything, you know, as we plow, everything's fairly smooth. You do a Main Street where you've already got ruts, and you're trying to, you're going to grind, and then you're going to have high spots, you're going to have low spots, so it'll grind, plows are going to hit. it'll grind, plows are going to hit the top, and you're going to take out sections of it, and it, it just becomes less beneficial to do it on existing roads that have cracks, bumps, heaves, tires.
Makes sense, you've got this wide of a place where the cars travel here, it pushes it down, and you've got little humps, and those probably get ground down a lot more than the rest, so, yeah.
Councilor Howard.
So this vinyl inlay stuff, let me get this straight. We pay good money for pavement, and then we pay someone to come in and grind it up?
Right, they come in and they do, just like it's called a microgrind, and they grind just a little bit, you know, they grind quarter to a half inch into the pavement, and then they, it's thermoplastic, so it's essentially heated plastic that melts to the pavement.
I'm not in favor of paying for pavement and paying to grind it.
Other discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Public Works Director to extend the agreement for arrows, lean designation, stop bars, crosswalks, striping, and Newman ground effects at the new 2022 unit prices per the attached proposal.
Second.
You have a motion in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item eighteen, Council Order Number 032107, request of the Public Works Director to award the Christian Ridge Road Rehabilitation Project Engineering.
All right, so on Thursday, March tenth, the City of Ellsworth accepted proposals for engineering work on the Christian Ridge Road Rehabilitation Project. This project is a, we got a grant from, or it's called an MPI Grant, or Municipal Partnership Initiative, with the main DOT to redo the section of Christian Ridge Road from the Bucksport Road to approximately Grant Street. First step of that is engineering. So we put out an RFQ to five different engineering firms, and we received two different proposals. After reviewing the proposals by the review team, which was myself, the highway foreman, and a counselor, um, we are recommending to award the project to Haley Ward, who, as some of you may know, was originally CES out of Bangor. They got bought out, and their new name is Haley Ward. They have done work for the city previously, and they have, it's a qualifications-based scoring rubric, and it was a close scoring, but they did come out ahead as they have a larger staff and more relevant comparable projects that they've done, so.
Councilors. Councilor Howard.
Could you share with the city and the people in this room the bids? The amount of the bids?
Well, yes, the, so, like I said, it's a qualifications-based, not price-based, it's not lowest bid, but this firm was $60,000, and the other firm was $49,900. So it's not the cheapest, but like I said, it has more than one on-staff engineer, and all these services are in-house versus multiple subcontractors, and the other engineer has not done anything of this scope for a comparable project. He's done, they've done a lot of work for the city, and it's all been great work, and I have no qualms with the engineer, it's just apples to apples, they have not done anything comparable to this.
Councilor Howard.
I'd just like to go on record as saying that, when I learned what you just shared, I was shocked, I, you've got one firm from Ellsworth at $49,900, and you've got one firm from Bangor at $60,000, and I just can't, in good conscience, give that business to an outsider when you have a qualified company in Ellsworth that's a taxpayer that's $10,000 less. As a matter of fact, if the situation were reversed, I would support the Ellsworth business.
Which is understandable, like I said, it's, it's, it's based on qualifications, how we ranked them is qualifications, not cost, is how we did the ranking.
Lisa.
Our taxes are based on money, and I'm disgusted to think that we would seek a bid from an Ellsworth firm and then toss them out and pay someone else ten grand more of hard-earned money. I'm disgusted.
Councilor White.
I was just wondering, is there a specific reason why you don't think Andrew McCullough could, could do this project? Because I, I...
I just want to, if I may, she never said that he couldn't. It was purely, the two bids were opened, and they were assessed purely based on experience, the qualifications of the firm, the staffing levels of the firm to get this job done, and the type of work that they've done in the past. And as, as Lisa has stated, the city has done a lot of work with Mr. McCullough, and has absolutely nothing bad to say about him or the job that he's done, but this, again, was solely based on comparing the two firms, not the individuals, not whether they're residents or non-residents, purely the qualifications of the firm. And to answer to Councilor Howard, and you certainly, as a council member, have the ability to make a motion that we don't accept the bid that's being recommended by the committee, and that we go with the alternative bid. So you don't have to be disgusted, you can actually make the motion that we go in a different direction.
Or I could do both.
You can.
Thank you.
So, if you don't mind, one of the other things I'd like to note, and just whether it puts you at ease or not, is generally when we, um, go after engineering firms, or we put together price quotes or estimates for engineering firms, you generally assume engineering is going to cost between 10% and 15% of the project costs, right? Right now, we're looking at a project that's $950,000-ish, which would mean that 10% itself would be $95,000. We're significantly under what normally is estimated for engineering costs for a project of this type and size. So it's not, yes, there's a $10,000 difference, but it's not, they're still both good prices, it's not unexpected range of dollar figures.
I just would say that, I, when you put the bid together in the fir, prior to setting it out, you had established standards for the RFQ in terms of specs. It wasn't done on the backside of the process, it was done on the front side in terms of being able to have a comparison to look at all those factors. And I certainly understand the perspective in terms of looking at cost and looking at, if somebody has a business in Ellsworth, I think those are important considerations. I do think that, like any RFP, one of the things we have to do is to make sure we're getting the best product. We just had a discussion about what kind of paint should we have. We should always have that discussion, because there's, sometimes there's value in spending more for something than spending less. Sometimes there's value in going with a company outside of Ellsworth than a company in Ellsworth. And I think it's legitimate for that kind of discussion, and I think what you did was, you met with a committee, you're making a recommendation, and now we have the final say in that. We can weigh all of those things, we can come up with our conclusion, and at the end of this discussion, we'll, we'll make a vote, based on your recommendations and based on these other factors. So I appreciate the process, and I just think it's important that, that's part of any RFP process. Everybody has the same opportunity to present information, and it wasn't, like, you didn't make anything up at the end of it, you just went by the criteria that you've established on the front.
Yep, and just for everybody's information, real quickly, sorry, got to find it now. The rubric that we used to score them is based on 30% of the qualifications of the consultant team, 30% on the project understanding approach, 20% on their prior experience with relative or comparable projects, 10% on references that they put for the comparable projects, and then 10% on their schedule quality. So they put together a schedule and tell me how quickly they can get this done for us, because I would like to hopefully be paving Christian Ridge Road in a year or so from now. So those are all factors that got put into that scoring rubric.
Councilor Captain, did you...
I was just going to ask you to open a window.
Well, it's not hot yet. You on the heat on? Councilor Willis.
Well, Lisa, would both companies be able to get the job done in time to pay you by next year at this time?
Do you both have the capabilities? Yes. My concern, and this is nothing against Andrew or the other, the Ellsworth firm, Andrew's a one-man show. If something happens to him, something changes, there's no backup. With going with another out of Bangor firm, if one person is out of commission, gets sick, whatever, somebody else steps in and the process continues. It's a, it's, it's a different staffing level, a different setup, um, and the biggest thing, like I said, is, those are my two issues, is the one-man show versus a full staffing, and then comparable projects. He has not done anything of this size caliber in the past, or that he showed me. This is something that Haley Ward does on a normal basis for many other towns throughout the state of Maine.
Councilor Howard.
Have you done a project of this magnitude of, as an engineer?
Myself?
Yes.
I've done something 10 times bigger than this, yes.
Okay, so you could step in if there's a problem?
Well, I'm not designing it, no.
So you have the capabilities?
I don't have, do I have the capabilities? Probably. Do I have the time and the staff? Not so much.
I understand. And I'd like to make something clear, I don't care who you give it to, you're not going to be paving next year at this time. This is March.
Well, a year and a month or two, hopefully. Ideally, it would be next May or June, yes.
Councilor White.
So, so, to be clear, Andrew, we believe, could do the job?
Yes.
I mean, I personally, he's a great engineer.
I have no issues with Andrew, it's just based on...
What's the worry, I mean, the worry is that he wouldn't be able to get the paper, the prints to you and everything all designed on time? Are you worried that it wouldn't be like a quality project over the other one, or...
I think there is some definite differences in level of detail, potentially, yes, as I've seen plans from both different engineering firms.
When I'm, so, did we, like, give him an invitation to bid this job?
Five engineers got all the same RFP paperwork, which is included in the package, yes.
When you, when you ask somebody to bid a job and they put in a bid, I think it would be responsible, if they're a good reputable outfit, you ask them to bid, and their price is lower to use that person.
Right, but it's not a low-bid scenario, it's a qualifications-based scenario.
Then why send him out?
It's a ranking thing, Andrew ranked, Andrew got a 94, let's say, CES got a 96.
Right, that's not bad, but why send him an invitation if you're not going to accept his bid?
Because I sent it to five of them, I can't accept all of them.
Okay, well, I'm ready whenever.
Councilor Captain.
So it's kind of like you're flying in a plane, and you have a local pilot who maybe scored a 75 on his final pilot's chest, but the further-away pilot, who is a little more expensive, scored a 99 on his pilot's chest, which one do you want?
Essentially, yes.
The done boy.
You ready? Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of Public Works Director to award the Christian Ridge Road Rehab Engineering to Haley Ward, an amount not to exceed $61,500, with funding coming from the main DOT MPI Grant and local roads account, 9090900-59001.
Second.
You have a motion in second, any further discussion? I just, one question, in terms of the scoring, because that, were those the actual scores that you just...
No, I just pulled them out. So three of us scored, so each one of them's going to score differently.
Yeah, I just wanted to get a sense of how...
How close, they were close? 92, 94, 87, 86, 87, 96. So I mean, everybody has a different...
No, that helps. Any other further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item nineteen, Council Order Number 032108, request of the Water Superintendent to purchase a new water pump for the water treatment plant.
So the memo is from me, but I'm going to have Reggie join me. We are here tonight to request that council allow us to go into an agreement with Woodard and Curran to procure and then oversee the replacement of one of the raw water pumps at the water treatment plant. There are two existing raw water pumps at the treatment plant out on Branch Lake. These pumps are the ones that pump the raw lake water to the plant to be filtered and processed to be turned into clean drinking water. These pumps are original pumps that were installed in the early 90s. One of the pumps has been mostly out of commission for years, and we have relied solely on the second pump for getting water to the plant and to the citizens. Due to the age and the need for redundancy on pumps, we are requesting to purchase a new raw water pump to replace the one that has been out of commission, since the city has two reliable pumps, to make sure that the water continues to flow into town without issues.
Any comments? Councilor Howard.
Is this a, this, this was not put out to bid, this is just something that you're comfortable with Woodard and Curran, and you want to award the contract to them?
Correct, so Woodard and Curran has been our engineer for water and wastewater for years, um, they are the ones that would be spec-ing it out and overseeing to make sure that it's, it was, along with Reggie, excuse me, to make sure that everything's put in correctly, in place.
And the city's had a good experience with this firm?
Yes, yes.
Doesn't have any problems in the past? Why is it, something like this wouldn't go out to bid? Is it that it's just a common thing, they know the system, and it makes more sense just to hire them?
Correct. And, um, you know, procuring pumps at this point in time is, there's a fairly significant lead time, so to have somebody come in and relearn our entire system, and it just, it takes, shortens up some of the time.
Do you have the pump already?
No, we don't, that's what we're asking, they're going to procure it, this price is for everything, it's for the pump, and Woodard and Curran to oversee, and they're really not doing a lot other than just making sure we got the right pump, the right fittings, the right, it's mostly for the actual pump work.
Is there any, any issues with putting a new pump in, and the one that's going now, is this something that we should consider doing both at the same time?
At this point, I wouldn't do both, we are planning to hopefully redo the treatment plant in three to five years, so at that time, then spend the money and replace that other pump as well.
And if we do get the new plant in more like five years, but well, three to five years, um, this is a pump that can be reused, you know what I mean? It'll only be a few years old, so we'll be able to keep it online, to keep water flowing while we're building the new plant, and then put it in as a backup at the new plant.
So if you did two at once, what would change in this price, from your perspective as an engineer?
Uh, it, it would probably, I wouldn't say it would quite double, it'd probably be, how much was there, 20? So it'd probably be another 21, 25-ish, I think, because most of it is, like I said, the pump.
How old is the plant, the existing pump that is... How old is the plant, the existing pump that is working now?
32 years. So the plant was built in 1990 and that's when the pumps were put in.
So they're both the same age?
They're both the same age. This pump that is being replaced has been damaged before due to flooding. It's just never been right since then. It has been repaired, but at this point, it's non-functional.
It's putting air in the system, which then throws off all the meters and the filtration process and it's more harm than it's, than it's worth at this point to try to run it.
But they're both the same age? And they both could go to a new plant?
The 32-year-old one would probably get phased out and then if we bought the new one now, that one would go to the new plant.
If you did both at once.
Oh, if we both did once? I don't know that because it all depends on what we design for the new plant, so...
Didn't you say that the one would go to the new plant?
Right, one could, so it's based on location and it's also based on elevation, correct? So the pump has to be able to, if the new plant is higher, we may have to upsize pump to get the proper lift to get to the new plant. But the one that's there right now essentially would just, I think, remain in its own little building as a backup plant. Or a backup pump type situation.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, moved to approve the request of the Public Works Director and Water Superintendent to go into an agreement with Woodard and Curran to procure and oversee the replacement of one of the raw water pumps at the water treatment plant. Project bid is not to exceed $148,000 and to be funded from the Water Department fund balance.
Second.
A motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? One opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you.
May I go on the record as saying I, the reason I oppose the project is, is I believe if they're both the same age, now is the time to do both, not just one and then one next year.
Just a heads up for everybody. At the conclusion of item 22, I will, we will take a brief, three to five-minute break just to give the councilors a chance, because we have a lot of other agenda items. So I just want to recognize we'll take a quick break for a moment after item 22. Councilwoman Kaplan.
Did you notice a lot of the people are fanning themselves?
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on. Item 20, public hearing in action to extend by 180 days a moratorium ordinance regarding medium, large-scale solar energy systems.
Good evening, councilors. Elena Pike, City Planner. So, most of you will recall in October, you adopted a moratorium ordinance covering large and medium-scale solar energy systems that is set to expire on April 16th this spring. So this request is, essentially grants us a little bit more time to make some progress on that process. That's done in sort of 180-day periods. We could come back sooner and propose amendments if prepared. But the proposed motion would extend it to this coming October. There's two tests that the council must find in order to take that action, which is that the problem giving rise to the need for the moratorium still exists and that reasonable progress is being made to alleviate the problem giving rise to that need. So I've provided a fairly detailed memo detailing that for you. Essentially, the problem still exists because the conditions haven't really changed. And what we had seen prior to adopting the moratorium was seven projects in a year and, less than a year and a half. So it was pretty rapid and high demand. The second condition, reasonable progress, so I've been talking with the planning board a little bit about how they'd like to approach it. I think they'd like to have like a joint workshop with you all to further talk out what the concerns are and how they can be addressed in the ordinance. And also, they would like the assistance of someone with some expertise on those energy markets and policy. So I've been in contact with a consultant who the city has used before for other topics with expertise not only in renewable energy, but really all forms of energy markets within the Northeast. So hoping to engage them and get some amendments, potentially if that's the solution that they see best fit, proposed prior to the end of the extension period.
Questions, comments? Councilwoman Howell.
I have a question and I, and a comment. Could you share with the public, you said there's seven projects in the city before you put the moratorium on?
Correct.
Is that correct? And two of those projects, the city is actually reaping proposed savings in electricity for the city of Ellsworth, correct?
Yes.
And after that was made, so two of those projects, the city is considering or thinking that they're gonna receive a savings from this project? Correct. And then there was a moratorium put on at Project 7. Okay? To me, it looks really bad for the city to endorse a project, get the benefit of perceived savings. We don't know if it's really for real yet, but I understand it's close to being seen if it's for real. And then bam, moratorium. No one else can have any savings. No one else can have any profit. And you had a six-month, is that right, six-month moratorium? After the city got its own benefit?
Nope, incorrect.
What is the correct?
So, if, can I jump in?
Please, please.
So, the projects that were, the city's projects were previous to other project applications. So it was not that the city voted to move into a project and then, then the council said, now we'll stop it. All of the projects that had come before the city, that were sitting in front of the planning board, where applications had been made, and it's a lengthy process. It doesn't just happen overnight. Somebody doesn't just walk in the door and say, oh, I wanna start a project. What we said as a council was, make sure those projects go forward. They're in the pipeline. They're already there. We're not going to touch those. But before we move forward any further, because there were so many, that the discussion that we had was the concern about, as a city, we don't have enough information to know what are the risks benefits? What are the planning? One of the things I hear constantly in this community is about lack of planning, lack of foresight for the future. What do we want to have happen? And so that was the basis of the discussion, not because the city was a partner in the project. It was because there were so many projects that we had authorized up until that point, that we said, let's take a pause while there's no other applicants in the pipeline and let's have a discussion about this and put a six-month moratorium. And now we're at that point of saying, what should we do at this point going forward? So it wasn't, not linked to, not because of, it was a part of the overall landscape. Councilwoman Howell.
That very well could be true and thank you for that information. But even with that information going forward, I think that it, it looks bad, it looks dirty, and I don't think it's fair that the city reaps the benefit and then puts the brakes on anything. I respect the fact that one's in the pipeline, didn't get affected, but said, no more, no more for six months. And now you want another six months. I'm in total disgust and disagreement.
Well, I'll just make one other comment that, just so everybody's clear, when Councilwoman Howell says that the city benefits, it's actually the taxpayers' benefit. The decision to enter this was the reality that this project, whether the city became involved or not, this project had already received authorization and the benefits of this process in which they get the tax deferment and all of that. The savings that are created for the city means that the taxpayers will pay less in terms of taxes to cover the electric costs. That's what this is about. And if we didn't buy into the project, the project would have gone somewhere else. They would have sold it to some other entity. So it's, it's not the city. The decision that was made was made on behalf of the taxpayers and that's certainly what my vote was about. Did I say your, yeah, Councilwoman?
Even if, even if they did build it in the same spot and we didn't take advantage, somebody would have taken advantage of it. It's not, it's not that we, you know, we just went behind everybody's back and did this. It was somebody who was gonna get the tax credits and I was hoping that it would be the people of Ellsworth. And that's the way it turned out luckily.
Councilwoman Hanson.
I just have a question, which is, is the discussion about the medium to large-scale solar energy systems and what the planning board wants to do with it, is it related to the comprehensive plan? Is it a discussion that would make sense in combination with the comprehensive plan or are they really totally different things?
I think it certainly is something that should be addressed through the comprehensive planning process. Since 2004, you know, energy has changed significantly and it almost couldn't have been anticipated that long ago that this is something that we would see. However, it's going to be quite some time until a final plan is presented to the council for adoption and to the state for a finding of consistency. So I don't really think it would be proper to extend and extend and extend a moratorium that long. I think we have sufficient information and sufficient, like, comparable land uses that it can be permitted by zoning and addressed by the site plan review and performance standards without needing to address it in the comp plan. I think you run into more of a legal concern if you were to extend it and extend it and extend it based on that rationale. But we will address that topic, I would say, in that process.
And so the workshop that you were saying that there would be a workshop between the planning board and the city council about this, when would you, when would you think that would be?
Well, since you'll be so busy with budget workshops, perhaps before you start that, I think we could get that consultant secured by that time. Yes.
Councilwoman Howell.
To your point, Mr. Chairman, the city did get the benefit. The project was gonna go without getting benefit for the taxpayers, if the benefit ever comes. We haven't seen it yet. Maybe it will. But to my point, is putting a moratorium prevents other citizens potentially from getting the benefit of what the city's getting?
Councilwoman.
What I'm finding that with research, a lot of times you have these investors in solar and the solar infrastructure is so great that by the time the investors reap the benefits and that energy is sold to the grid, it's actually costing the general citizen higher energy costs.
I can believe that.
I mean, who else has noticed your energy bill's gone up lately? I know I have, so...
Councilwoman.
I think when we put that moratorium on, we talk about who cleans it all up in 10 years or 20 years or five years. We don't know a lot about it, whose responsibility is to clean it all up because there may not be anybody around to clean it up unless we do it ourselves. So there was a lot of other questions. Why we put that on? And, go ahead, Michelle.
Yes, and if they, if they open solar farms here in Ellsworth, they're under no obligation to sell that energy to the citizens of Ellsworth. They sell it to the grid, to the highest bidder.
Councilwoman Howell.
I'd like to point out they can't sell the energy if they don't build it.
So, and I think that the consultant that we were looking to work with could speak to a lot of these questions. And that's the value in having a joint workshop. And just also don't forget that there is a public hearing involved in this item.
So, so we had six months, but what did happen? Do we not get together and probably could have gotten together in that six months too and...
Right.
Figure this out. So can we extend it again? Can we get it done this time?
Yeah, I mean, that's, remains the goal. Had to have a conversation with the planning board and start communicating with that consultant, you know, found a name for that person. There's not a whole lot of people who provide that service and that was something that they had asked for, so...
I think we got a lot of, we still have a lot of unanswered questions, but I think we should probably jump on it and get them answered.
Councilwoman.
Mr. Chairman, moved to extend the medium and large-scale solar energy systems moratorium ordinance for a period of 180 days from April 16th, 2022 pursuant to 30A MRSI, section 4356-2 as attached heretofore, as the problem giving rise to the need for this moratorium still exists and reasonable progress is being made to alleviate this problem.
Before there's a second, I'm gonna open the public hearing for a comment and then we'll come back to...
Knock yourself out.
Public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak on this item, they may.
My name is Lucille Poole and I just have a question really, hoping you can answer. Will you be involving the Ellsworth Green Action Team in the process of sorting out the solar farms?
Well, it will be, any, any workshop, it will be public, there'll be public meetings.
It will be public, okay.
Yeah, they're all, they're all public meetings, yeah, absolutely. Anyone else? All right, I'll close the public hearing.
Solar energy is not cost-effective. It's one of the reasons your electric bills are going up so high. In 20 years, those solar panels will be dead. Then they create massive hazmat. Have you thought about setting up an escrow account for that purpose? Where if you wanna have a solar farm, you have to have an escrow account to cover the decommission costs and treat it as hazmat, not regular trash.
Yeah, that's what Councilwoman Lyons was referring to. One of the issues that came up of why we had the moratorium, that was one of those items, was to address that.
Okay, I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, no, that's, I just wanted you to know that that was the previous discussion. So I'll close the public hearing. We have a motion.
Second the motion.
Okay, motion and second, now discussion. Councilwoman Kaplan.
Do we need to amend the date? If we're voting on it today?
No, I don't think so.
No, the, the six months expire is on April 16th, the original six months.
It's extending it from the date that expires. Councilwoman.
So, if we extend it, in that amount of time, everybody gets together and figures, wow, we should just bring this back and open it up? We can do that?
Yes, we can.
Prematurely, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're not, we're just saying, extend it, but we might be able to get this resolved before?
Yes.
Correct.
There are questions that I rarely have unanswered and...
Any other comments?
One final question. What was done during the six-month moratorium?
So, don't you have a motion on the table?
We do, but it's part of the discussion, so councillors can ask questions.
So, as I stated before, spoke with the planning board about it. We kind of, I mean, I do wish I had gotten started a little bit sooner, but we kinda got through the holidays and I don't think the planning board met in December, I think it was. So we had a couple of conversations about that. Looked at scheduling, it was partly like, once I'd had those conversations, found the consultant contact from the city's previous efforts in this area and initiated that conversation. Then once you start looking at the scheduling to do one or more joint workshops, to do the appropriate noticing, holding public hearings at the planning board, probably a workshop just for the planning board to do the work of looking at the current ordinance, drafting new amendments. So they have a whole process and it probably also will involve significant mailing costs to a lot of, if not the entire city, every property owner because you might be taking away a type of use. So all of that, then, on top of that, the council's public hearing process, to line up all those timelines and all those meetings becomes kind of challenging and it became clear that, well, so now we can't do it. You couldn't extend it in April because you'd be a couple of days late. I mean, it could be done, but this made the most sense time-wise to give it a little bit more time and other things come up in the meantime. So there's been some big projects and unexpected things as well. I mean, we also, you know, one of the things that I and I think the planning board as well struggled with was there wasn't much discussion at the council when this came up about what the concerns were. So we have regulations in place now. I mean, when I say regulations, I mean the three... when I say regulations, I mean, the three types of solar, um, plus energy storage were all created as land use categories in the zoning ordinance and then performance standards were developed for them back in the spring of 2020. Um, so a lot of thought was put into it, adopted or recommended for adoption by the planning board and adopted by the city council. And then this is kind of, that was progress and then there's a stop on it and there wasn't much discussion about what the concerns were, other than it's new, we don't know much about it, it's maybe subsidized. So there's not much to parse through that, um, which is the reason that the, the board sees a need for a joint workshop with you all.
Counsel.
If we extend it tonight, is there any reason why you can't get, jump right on it and get all the information you can, try to get this together so that we either let it expire or we can get with people and get this moving forward?
Yeah, we can, um, I mean, like I said, I think probably best to try to do something before you get underway with budget workshops, since you'll have a meeting every week for a month or more. Yeah.
All right, so no more discussion, all in favor of the, to approve the motion. All opposed. One opposed, motion passes. Item 21, council order number 032109, request of the city planner to designate the Ellsworth Planning Board as the planning committee responsible for preparing the comprehensive plan in accordance with Maine's Growth Management Act 30A MRS A, chapter 187.
So again, Elena Pike, City Planner, um, this is kind of just a formality, um, in my mind. This allows us to take next steps on, we get truly beginning the comprehensive planning process. So a request to designate the planning board as the planning committee, um, defined by state law, with the general responsibility for overseeing the development of the plan. Um, so that doesn't mean that the planning board would do all of the work. Um, we kind of discussed this last, last month when I presented to you on the process. You know, I don't expect every single planning board member to be, um, significantly invested, but they would kind of oversee the process, meaning the public hearings and, um, setting up the format for a steering committee and would report back to the planning board. But somebody needs to be designated under state law, um, in order to bear that responsibility.
Mr. Chairman, move to designate and establish the Ellsworth Planning Board as the planning committee for City of Ellsworth pursuant to 30 dash A MRS A, chapter 434, 43242.
Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor? All those unanimous?
Thank you.
Item 22, council order number 032110, request of the public works director to change a part-time position to a full-time position at the transfer station.
Good evening, Lisa Cyclich, public works director. Um, sorry, I have a pile here. So I'm here tonight to request a change in staffing levels at the transfer station recycling center. The solid waste committee met on March 1st to discuss this change in staffing levels and were supportive, and they were supportive of bringing this request to the full council. I'm requesting that a part-time seasonal position be changed to a permanent full-time position. This request would mean the transfer station recycling center would be staffed with two full-time employees. This would allow us to open the transfer station back up to citizens for full days on Tuesdays and Thursdays, um, as we previously were open. Now we're only open half days on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Um, this additional help at the transfer station is needed. The highway department, for the better part of the year, has had to supplement staffing up there, even though themselves were, they were understaffed. The extreme amount of cardboard we are receiving at the recycling center, as well as other recyclables, we believe is mostly due to the amount of people who have turned to ordering items online during the pandemic and then recycle responsibly the numerous boxes the items are shipped in. The funding for the second position was previously funded by Acadia disposal districts in payments of about $27,000 a year. The last two years, um, Acadia disposal district stopped bringing their stuff to us in late 2019, early 2020, I believe. Um, but the last two years, FY21 and FY22, we have had a substantial increase in recycling revenue, um, both due to price increases over what we saw in 2020, as well as due to the amount of items we are processing. Um, in FY21, after the crash of recycling, we estimated we would only bring in about 8,000 in recycling revenue. We actually received about 27,000. Um, so then this year we upped it to about 10,000 and to date we have received, um, over 39,000 in recycling revenue. Um, I believe the change of positions makes sense for the employees at this location, the citizens of Ellsworth and the city in general.
Counsel.
Is this going to result also in increase in health insurance benefits?
Um, no, it would go back to what it was before.
Time off, sick days, retirement and all of the other benefits go along full time versus part time?
Because I'm gonna rehire that position. So yes, so it would be, so it would be an increase. One of the things I didn't include in the packet is, um, for discussion purpose, so yes, there would be an increase potentially in some of those benefits, right, that the part-time seasonal does not get. But one of the things to, um, remember about the transfer station is there's multiple sources of revenue for the transfer station. So we have our residential stickers that we all get for our trash. There's commercial revenue, um, which is basically if you get scaled, it's not really commercial, it's the homeowners can do it, and then there's some, um, like apartment complexes and stuff that gather and bring their trash. Um, there's recycling revenue, there's term chip user fees, and then lastly, the city appropriation. With the increase in recycling revenue, even with this additional, um, position costs, the city appropriation, based on the numbers I ran, and it'll be in your council or your packets for the budget, the city appropriation actually remains about the same or it goes down.
Mr. Chairman.
I was just gonna say the same thing you say, which is motion to, um, approve the change of a part-time position to a full-time position at the transfer station.
You read my mind.
I did.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you much.
All right, we will take a three and a half minute break. Hey, people, listen to that when you say it like that. Are you all set? Okay. For the record, that was more than three and a half minutes.
And thank you.
Remember that speech time.
But you still only get three minutes at the podium. Um, and we will enforce that. I know we have a lot of people speaking this evening on this subject. Um, and I just want to remind everybody, I think everybody knows this, but, um, obviously when presenting, you're presenting to, to the council, um, your opinion. Um, I think we can have a respectful conversation about this and that's, that's part of our process is to make sure that it's respectful, that it's not attacking anybody. Um, if that should happen, then I will certainly jump in to, to redirect the conversation so that it's positive and productive. Um, but with that, let me introduce the item and we'll go from there. So, item 23, discussion in action regarding painting of a cro- rainbow crosswalk on Main Street. And it's sponsored by Counsel Hanson, so I'll turn it over to you for.
Yeah, so I think the thing that makes the most sense, since this is really the students' presentation, is we'll let the students present first and then I think let the people make their comments and then we have our discussion. And then I will save, I will save my comments for when I make my motion at the end of all the discussion. So, go ahead.
And if you could, again, just say your name and where you're from and.
Hi, I'm Carrie Cutney. I am a teacher at Ellsworth High School and I am the faculty advisor to the Gender Sexuality Diversity Alliance Group at Ellsworth High School. I am not gonna introduce the project, I'm gonna let the students do that, but before I introduce them, I just wanted to explain like what is in the packet that we gave you. The first is some statistics, which are the most recent that we have that are statewide from the Maine Integrated Youth Health Survey. Um, and this is a survey where the state of Maine, um, through DHHS and the Department of Education enter, or do a survey for all public high school students. Um, and they do this every two to three years. They have not done it since 2019 because of COVID, um, and I don't know if they're gonna do it again this spring or next year. Um, but they, they ask all types of questions regarding health. And when these statistics came out, it was very clear that the LGBTQ community faced a lot of health disparities. And when the students were talking about this, um, that's what launched this project. So I will let them talk about it more in detail, but that's what is in your packet. Um, the second thing is a photo from Nick Navar, who is a local photographer, of the area where we would like to put the crosswalk. So you can sort of visualize where it's going to be. Um, let's see. So as far as the GSDA is concerned, this year we have 27 active members. At Ellsworth High School, this year we have 536 students. That was as of today. So that's 5% of the student body. Um, many are not here. Um, it takes a lot of courage, as a teenager especially, to come and address an issue that is this personal and this sensitive and put yourself in that kind of position of vulnerability. So I would just really like. So I would just really like to acknowledge how courageous these students are, because they really are here on behalf of their friends who can't be here, and to make Ellsworth a better place. So with all due respect, I'm going to turn this over to the students and let them tell you all about this project. Thank you very much.
And I'd like to introduce our Vice President, Elizabeth Ford. She's going to speak first.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Ford. I'm a junior at Ellsworth High School, and I've lived here all my life. I guess to really begin, it was about, I think, a year ago now that we first, or a year and a half ago that we first brought this to City Council as an idea to prevent bullying in our schools and really, and discrimination in our community, really. And when we first came to City Council, it was mostly a, we want this crosswalk, we'll do whatever you'd like, we'll put it wherever you'd like. But where that fell through, we're now presenting again with a more specific spot in mind, and addressing some of the concerns that were brought up from last time. At this point, we are planning on putting it in the Franklin Street, right in front of City Hall, right over there, actually. And it would be low traffic, and it'd also be where there's a lot of concern about safety last time, it'd be a low traffic area, and it's where the park lit this summer. There might be like no traffic during the summer where many people are walking around. While the DOT does say it's very safe, that was a concern last time that we wanted to address to be sure that every person was heard. And from that, I'm going to kind of go into some of the statistics that we were talking about. LGBT students are much less likely to support from adults, and more likely to experience violence. That's in your packet. And I think this is a really important thing to think about, because we aren't, LGBT community isn't really given that much support. There's support from friends, maybe family, but many people don't have that. And I think it's really important for our community to show that publicly with this crosswalk. And I have also collected data from a sample of 100 Ellsworth High School students as statistics project. This was taken in September of 2021. These students were selected by blocking off the grade level variable in order to make sure that any effect the grade level may have on the statistics would be taken into account. We also randomly selected three advisories from each grade, using a number generator to make sure it's completely random and I had no bias. The survey was then given to all students and these twelve advisories. From my research, I found that 31% of the students surveyed identified as part of the LGBTQ community. Thirty out of the 31 students, or 96.8% of these students who identify as part of the LGBTQ community, suffered from anxiety. This was about, this was compared to the 49.3% of the non-LGBTQ+ students that identified as having anxiety, showing the large disparity in mental health. 67.7% of LGBTQ+ students suffer from depression in my survey, versus the 13% of non-LGBTQ+ identifying students. That means that LGBTQ+ students in the sample were more than five times more likely to suffer from depression.
So, just the three minutes left, but I want to ask, are all of you going to speak, or do you have individuals who are speaking on behalf? Because if that's the case, then we can extend time if you have a few representing the voice.
I think not everyone is going to speak, but there are other constituents.
Yeah, no, I understand that, just in terms of, so...
Yeah, I was going to do, I think, a majority of the speaking, if that is all right.
Okay, go ahead.
And that's how it's animized, the statistics, showing how the mental health disparity of LGBTQ students, and just how much they suffer more than the opposing students. And I can speak to my personal experience with this. Like, I had trouble coming out for the longest time due to these public comments of hate and discrimination. Reading through like Ellsworth American article comments, or just public comments on private Facebook pages, I didn't feel safe coming out. I didn't think that if I came out, I would be supported by my community. I wasn't even sure if I'd be supported by my friends, because it's hard not knowing, if that makes sense. But I had to come out in school even, because I see how the other students are treated, and how people refer to LGBTQ community, saying, oh, that's so gay, and negative term, using it as a negative term, and kind of saying, oh, being gay or trans is bad. And that made me really scared to come out, knowing that there's people in my community that will not support me and hate me just because of something I identify with. But I ended up coming out last year to my family and some friends, mostly because of the Pride Fest that we had last year, as a result of this crosswalk, actually. I saw how, when I saw how many people came to that Pride Fest to support us, I really felt how many people do support us, and how many people really won't judge me and won't hate me for who I am. And I think that's really beautiful in the way that if we show the support and inclusion in our community, that people will feel safer, people will feel more welcomed in our community. And really, I think, having that crosswalk as a community representation of this community supports you, this government supports you, and that this is the kind of discrimination that I'm talking about won't be tolerated. And while we have some of these crosswalks at the schools, children aren't the only people affected by this. Many people in the older generations were never allowed to mention the words gay, or trans, or bisexual, or any of those words. And I think it's really important to help those closeted people from generations ago who didn't have the chance to come out, to give them that support, the kind of empowerment that they really need. Yeah. And I think really having that crosswalk there is a public sign that we support all people who come here, is a really important thing to have. Especially where, while the rainbow represents LGBTQ+ community, it also represents inclusion in general. We don't only support LGBTQ+ community, we support all people, and we accept them no matter what their beliefs, their identity, their race, their nationality, any of those things. We accept all people. And yeah, I think I'm going to turn it over to Katie.
Hi, my name is Katie Gleason. I'm a freshman at Ellsworth High School. I've lived here for four years. And I just want to come here today to say how even like these small acts, like painting a crosswalk can impact our community as a whole. Last year, we painted the crosswalks, and off of that stemmed the Ellsworth Pride Fest. And that brought in so much positivity and so much community to Ellsworth, I think. There was a lot of acceptance shown, and we showed that we were like welcoming people. And I really think that it brought in business, too. I know that's a big factor for some of the people in this room. I know a lot of businesses profited off of all the tourists coming in, because I know that tourism can be a problem. I know a lot of people go straight through Ellsworth, right into Bar Harbor. And that can be a problem, because, you know, we're missing all of that. And Bar Harbor, it brings in a lot more. But last year, we brought in quite a bit out of that, even like noticing that a small act, like painting a crosswalk, like brought something big like that, and brought like a lot of people together. And it made a lot of people feel more accepted in the community. And I know towns all over Maine are getting closer to that, and I know a lot of media has been watching. So I don't have too much to say. But I really think that doing something small even, it's, it brings a lot of good. So that's basically all I wanted to say. But yeah, thank you.
I am Bren Hammond. I am a senior at Ellsworth High School, and I have been in the city of Ellsworth for over eight years. One big part about a crosswalk is that it will help prevent bullying of anyone, really, not just people of the LGBT community. In places where there are other rainbow sidewalks, a lot of the bullying for not just LGBT people, but people of all of their backgrounds have also gone down. It shows that the place where these crosswalks are, aren't just a place that will tolerate bad information about people, or discriminate against people of different backgrounds. And this also greatly affects the LGBT people. It gives them a, I guess, symbol to help them get the confidence to be who they are. According to some of the statistics, there are 38% of LGBT people who think, get attacked based on just their sexual orientation, versus only 4% of people who aren't LGBT. And then 26% of people get attacked for their gender expression, while only 8% of people who aren't LGBT people do. It also helps them boost their mental health. One big thing about LGBT people not being accepted is their mental health. About 64% of LBC students feel sad or hopeless for two or more weeks in the past, versus non-LGBT people, which is only 27%. And nearly half of LGBT students have long-term emotional or behavioral problems expected to last six months or more. LGBT students are nearly four times as likely to have serious or seriously considered suicide in the past year. And yeah, I would like to...
Hi, my name is Abigail Barnes. I am a senior at Ellsworth High School, and I have lived in Ellsworth my whole life. Today, I'm actually going to read two statements prepared by two people who couldn't be here today. So first, I'm going to be reading a statement from a senior named Amber Rae Pessek. My name is Amber Rae Pessek. I'm a senior at Ellsworth High School. I've gone to EHS all of my high school career, and we have a rainbow sidewalk. I love our sidewalk and what it stands for. I'm an ally to the LGBTQIA community, and I am proud of that. I believe that representation of the LGBTQIA community is so, so important. I really, I would really like everyone who is here to take the time to think about the kids who are afraid to come out, or do not have any representation for who they feel they are. Just having a rainbow sidewalk could change someone's life, and for that reason, EHS's GSDA should be allowed to paint a rainbow sidewalk. Sincerely, Amber Rae Pessek. The second statement is from a freshman named Leigh Ford. As a member of the LGBTQ community, I have faced a lot of challenges. Within the school, there's a certain amount of harmful stereotyping towards us. People commonly will use the term gay as an insult, or as a term to insult people, saying things like, that's so gay, and what are you, gay? It makes me extremely pained and uncomfortable to hear when a term for a community that I am a part of is being used to make fun of others. It's making it sound like it is bad to be gay. Having a rainbow crosswalk will help to make Ellsworth a more accepting place, and to help erase the prejudice surrounding the LGBTQIA community. Sincerely, Leigh Ford. Thank you.
I don't know if I have to approach this or not, but I think the students are done speaking.
Okay.
Do you have questions for us?
Not this time, or do anybody want to make a comment?
I have a comment.
Sure.
I'm very impressed with all the young people here that has the courage to get up and speak, or just attend this meeting. It's very impressive, and I think everyone deserves a round of applause.
I'll just add that I've been a teacher for a really long time, and I have, over the past year and a half or two years, never had a group of students who have written and received a grant in the thousands of dollars. Elizabeth did a research paper to get statistics on the LGBTQ community in Ellsworth High School because we didn't have that information. It's not often you get a kid who just writes a 15-page paper because we need to know. They have gone to umpteen million Zoom and in-person meetings with many of you over the past year and a half. Just the amount of research and dedication and time they have put into this project is really impressive, and they are a very impressive bunch. So I'll stop talking now.
So, we will open it up for comment. I know that everybody's here. If you want to speak, obviously you want to have your say. But I would ask that if you hear something that's been said, just to reference it, if you, rather than going in and repeating ourselves, if the point's been made, we've heard it. But if you feel like you have to make the point, I'm not obviously going to stop you and say that's been said. But just keep that in mind, because we have a lot of people, and we want to make sure we give everybody a chance to at least have an opportunity to speak. So, again, you can just go up one at a time, your name, where you're from, and your comments. And we'll just keep rolling through. So once somebody's done, somebody can jump right in.
Good evening. I'm John Linehan. I live here in Ellsworth. And I'm going to approach this issue from a little different perspective. I am a Christian. I'm born again. I'm saved. I know Jesus Christ as my personal Savior. I was saved when I was 26 years old, a little bit older than these young people here, not much. Since that time, I've spent the last 45 approximately years, reading and studying what I believe is the Word of God, the Bible. I've based my life on the principles that are in it, over and over and over. And I'm here opposed to the rainbow crosswalks for my spiritual and moral reasons. And I want to encourage the council to vote no on this issue. And I want to just read you one Bible verse that kind of summarizes where I'm headed this right here. And it's 2 Timothy 3:16. It says, "All scripture is given by inspiration of God, and it's profitable for teaching, for reproof, for correction, for training in righteousness." In simple terms, it just says that God's Word, the Holy Bible, tells us what's right, what's not right, how to get right, and how to stay right. I've based my whole life for 45, six years now, on the Bible, on those principles in it. And I have also sent a video to the council members. I've posted it on my website, just because I know three minutes wasn't a long amount of time. So if you go to my website, just John Linehan, on Facebook, rather, and look on there, I've got a video. And it's just an educational video of why LGBTQ, et cetera, is sin according to the Bible, is sin according to the Bible. It's not the viewpoint that God has, it's not acceptable in God's sight. Doesn't mean God hates people, no more than he hates a murderer. He doesn't hate the murderer, he hates the sin of murdering somebody. It doesn't mean people hate just because you disagree. I respect every person who spoke here today. I just have a different opinion of what they are on that. But you know what? It doesn't matter what their opinion is, what my opinion is, or what the council's opinion is, in my opinion. All that matters is what God's Word, the Holy Bible, says. And for centuries after centuries, that Word has been the foundation that our nation is built upon. Our nation is built on biblical principles and a constitution. And I live by both of those documents. I have them both up here with me. Our nation is founded on those principles. So I encourage people here to really take a stand. If you love young people, which I do, and that's why I would take a stand like I am. I may be the only one here today, that doesn't matter. I believe what I'm saying is truth, and I've raised two sons, seven grandchildren, and I believe in telling young people the truth. And they can make a choice. Everybody has a decision, a choice to make. But I believe if I didn't tell you what I'm talking about there, and just let it go about, then it would be not influencing people in the right community in the right way. So I encourage you to take a look at God's Word. Watch the video I have on there. It clearly says that God doesn't hate anybody, I don't hate anybody, God loves people, and so don't I. Is that a timer?
Period.
Period. Thank you. I didn't recognize that. Thank you for your time today. I appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Pine Hanson. I've lived in Ellsworth almost all of my life. I'm a sophomore at Ellsworth High School. And I just, I really didn't plan anything to say today, but I just feel that I've done a couple of things with the GSDA before, and I've helped paint the crosswalks, and I helped out with the Pride Fest. And being at those events... And being at those events, they've just felt right. They've given me a sense of belonging that I really didn't feel like I had, you know, four or five years ago when I came out. And I think that, yes, respecting everyone's opinions is very important. I'm sorry. But I think that, and that, yes, telling the truth is important. And I think the truth really here is that our community does support you and does care that you are safe and that you are loved and that you are supported. And I think that the crosswalk is really the best way to show that. And as I believe Katie said, that it's really the way to lead to bigger and better things for our community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm, thank you for the opportunity. I'm Mark Worth. I am a resident of Ellsworth. I'm minister emeritus of the Unitarian Universalist Church of Ellsworth, and I'm here to speak in favor of the rainbow crosswalk and in support of our young people here. Three minutes is too short a time to preach a sermon, and so I won't try to debate every biblical verse that there is, but I do know that Jesus himself never spoke against LGBTQ people or their relationships in any words that we have of his in the Bible, but that he did say, "Take the log out of your own eye before you try to take the speck out of your neighbor's eye." He said, "Judge not so that you will not be judged." He said, "Love your neighbor as yourself." And so I'm here to speak about my faith in the inherent worth and dignity of every person and in my support for this effort and for these brave young people. Thank you.
My name's Gwen Clark, and I wanted to say that, just something briefly about the rainbow crosswalks. I have friends. I have relatives who are involved in the LGBT plus community. And I think overall, we believe in equal rights. We don't believe in special rights. I have older friends that are members of the LGBT community who are really a little taken back because the new generation is out there. And like I said, they believe in equal, not special. I've sat in the school parking lot and watched the school crosswalks. I've had kids come up to me and say, "I need to get across the street through this traffic, and I don't know how to get there." And I said, "You have to use the crosswalk." And they refuse to use the crosswalk because they are afraid that they're going to be judged. So it's a damned if you do, damned if you don't situation. But I might suggest, I might suggest that it's a safety issue, not a popularity statement. And if we're going to have inclusive and diversity in our community, that we do so as American citizens because we are all-inclusive. And I suggest that maybe we make a red, white, and blue crosswalk and do it for the month of July.
Hi, I'm Nate Hanson. I'm a parent here in Ellsworth. I've got one kid who's gone off to college and another kid who you just heard from. As we heard from some of the kids' stories, these gestures matter in real ways to kids and in real, concrete outcomes in how they feel, their mental health, whether they try to hurt themselves in some cases. This is not some theoretical issue. This is a real issue of the children in your community trying to help other children and adults in your community to live free and healthy lives the way many of us do in ways that we take for granted every day without ever considering how privileged we are to not be concerned with the way that our neighbors and others in our community judge the way we are, who we love, and the way our families have come together in loving and natural ways. We take that for granted because we just happen to live in a way that the world has decided that's the right way. And we don't have people who'll come up to this podium and say that just the way we live is a sin to compare it to murder. So pause and consider that this is not a theoretical issue to many of the people in this room and the people who love them. There are other ways that we can express inclusion and support for all sorts of people in our town. We do that when we light up our tower above City Hall pink to recognize breast cancer survivors, and we put that on. We put those emblems on our police cruisers. We have banners for our armed forces downtown that we hang to support our veterans. We have all sorts of ways that we can express our support for all sorts of people. Painting a crosswalk with the American flag colors, another great idea. And if people want to raise money and engage in a civic process and propose that as a gesture of support and inclusion and welcoming in our town, then by all means, do it. But don't not do it and then use that as an argument against the gesture of love and support that these kids have brought to make Ellsworth a safer and more loving and more accepting place for everyone. So I hope that in the future, when the next group comes with a proposal for whatever gesture of support and inclusion that they'd like to come up with, that you also approve that just as I firmly hope you'll approve this. Thank you.
My name is Bryn Stevenson. I'm a freshman at Ellsworth High School, and I've also lived here all my life. I'm not really prepared to speak today, but I'd like to make it clear that I don't think this is in any way endangering people by having a crosswalk. I don't think I've ever seen anyone struggle to use the crosswalk to cross the street. But I also think that showing your support and helping people with their mental issues will be more productive than fearing that people are fearing to be judged by supporting other people. And I think just the two things don't even contrast. You can't compare them because they're just two different safety measures. And I think just one is more important. Thank you.
My name's Gord Workman. I live in Ellsworth. Been here for sixty-one years this year. Kudos to you guys for staying in. I like it. It's great. But what I've seen on Facebook pages doesn't show the back, respect that you want from us when we discuss it on Facebook. And that's a problem that I see. I think crosswalks in general is a public place. It shouldn't be for any group to be used for an agenda or organization. I don't, it doesn't matter what group it is. I think that's a town property, taxpayers' property. That should say neutral. Because in the last few years, what's happened in Ellsworth? We've had marches. We've had BLM in here. We never had this stuff before. And I'm afraid that we may change our atmosphere how we are in Ellsworth. Because I love everyone. I've known Ralph for years. I've known him. He knows I don't judge people for who they are. And there's a lot of people in Ellsworth that don't judge people for who they are. And I think if we just stay neutral, respect that we're a human race and not judge it on symbols or categories or whatever, we're better off. Because once you start dividing, when you're going to have problems in the future. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Serrard. I'm a junior at Ellsworth High School, and I have been here my entire life. I've never lived in a different home or a different city. I think that changing the atmosphere in our town is not necessarily a bad thing. The friends that have approached me personally and said, "Hey, I trust you, and I would like to come out to you," they're wonderful people. And there are some friends that I have that say, "Please keep this a secret because if my parents were to find out, bad things would happen." And I think that having a welcoming atmosphere where these students can truly be themselves and truly feel as though they're safe would be a wonderful thing. And I am one hundred percent in support of this crosswalk. Thank you.
My name's Shane King. I'm probably going to get blasted for this, but I heard a man of the cloth speak up. He didn't speak up about the fact that God instituted marriage between a man and a woman. He didn't talk about the fact that we're not supposed to have sex before we're married. So these children shouldn't even be worried about sex right now. Our teachers should not be teaching our kids about our morals and our sex at home, at the school.
Just stop here for a second. I just want to ask everybody in here. When somebody's speaking, we want to hear what people are saying. This isn't going to turn into a rally. I want everybody to listen to what the speaker is saying and not engage in inside chatter. It's hard enough to hear, but it's also inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say that I love everybody. I really do. I care. I want to talk about when I was that age, and I was trying to fill my heart with anything, just trying to feel whole. I filled it with drugs. I filled it with sex. I filled it with rock and roll. And you know what? Nothing ever filled that hole. Not a sidewalk. God filled that hole. And I think that we need to start teaching our kids stuff in school that needs to be taught in school. And we need to start teaching our kids stuff at home that needs to be taught at home. So thanks for letting me speak.
Hi, I'm Margarina DeDeo. I'm a senior at Ellsworth High School. So I actually, I live in Trenton, but I have gone to Ellsworth School my whole life. And I would just like to point out the fact that we should respect everyone's opinions and beliefs and especially like religion. There are so many different religions, and we should respect all their opinions and, you know, where they're coming from and their personal experiences, you know, like that they have found happiness through religion. But I'd also like to point out that this issue is with the local government. And a founding principle of this country was the separation of church and state. And so I would just like to ask you that these religious stories and these religious beliefs do not sway this government issue. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Fred Byer. I've lived here for eight years. I'm older than ninety-nine percent of you. Maybe a hundred, who knows? The point I'd like to make is, when I was growing up in the age of these kids, we had some queer guys in our class in high school. And call someone queer back then was one of the most derogatory things you could say to a kid. We didn't even know about feminists or lesbians or whatever, but gay guys, they were targets. They couldn't wait to graduate from high school so they could move to San Francisco. That was their solution. We don't want these kids going to San Francisco. And for them, I mean, to see how things have changed for a group this large of, in the kids in the LGBT community, to come out in public and talk to old people who, let me be critical here, that stuck in the nineteen-sixties, judging by some of the comments that I've heard from some of the people out here in the audience. I went to the Pride Fest last summer. I think I'll blame my daughter because I moved out here because of grandchildren. I was amazed at the warmth, the friendliness, and the camaraderie of the hundreds of people that were there, something with five years ago in Ellsworth would have been absolutely unthinkable because they know their targets. And I think we owe it to them. To say, "Come up here and stay neutral" means, "Don't do anything for our kids." Doesn't make sense. And as one gal said, "Boy, the problem crossing a sidewalk." But it is symbolic. It is supportive of the children in this town. And to turn our backs on them, to relegate them to more depression, more hard feelings, more bullying because we can't see the changes happening around here, that's the sinful stuff here. That's not what these guys are talking about. That would be the sin, is to leave these kids in the lurch.
Hello, my name is James Doty. I've been in Ellsworth for about ten years now. I just wanted to speak. Everybody, a lot of these speakers have touched on what I want to speak about, but not right to the point. This crosswalk is a symbol of acceptance. And I'm thinking about all the young people out there that don't feel like they can come out yet. They are not going to be accepted by their family. They don't feel like their friends will accept them and so forth. They're feeling isolated, just like most teenagers always have some form of isolation in their, as they develop. But this community really suffers from that when they don't feel like they'll be accepted by anybody, including their own family. And seeing something like these crosswalks go in, even if they can't come out, even if they can't bring themselves to talk to their family or their friends yet, they'll know they're not alone. They're not as alone as they feel like they are. They'll know they can, that other people have worked on this and are getting through this. And isolation leads to depression. Depression leads to suicide. We don't want that for our kids. We want our kids to know that they have hope. Even if they can't come out yet, they have hope so that they don't go down that path. And that's really all I have to say.
Hello, my name's Ralph Jordan. I've lived in this community for sixty-one years, with the exception of the eight years that I put in the United States Navy. In that time, I raised my hands three times to swear to uphold and protect the Constitution of the United States. I don't recall seeing the word "accept" in there, except for this or except for that person. The only thing I want to say tonight, well, a couple of things, actually. But the first thing I want to say is, I am so extremely proud of you people. You show so much courage. You show so much courage. It took me 34 years to show as much courage as these young people did tonight, to say, this is who I am, this is who I love, and to get that love back. We're talking about paint. And it should be simple, right? Paint is a substance. But it's powerful because it can do probably the most powerful thing that we can do today, to start a conversation. This is who I am. This is who I love. I love this town. I love it so much that we had this Pride Festival last year. It's something I never thought I'd see in my life. And once again, I'm just so, so extremely proud. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Chris Osterbauer. I've been a nurse at Main Coast Hospital for the last 25 years. I too wanna commend these young people for coming out and engaging in this process and working to make our community a better place. Last fall, Northern Light, Main Coast Hospital, and Blue Hill Hospital painted internal rainbow-colored crosswalks for a couple of really good reasons. First of all, not only do rainbow crosswalks look really good, they maintain pedestrian safety. Second, they imply inclusivity. The two hospitals and their Shared Diversity Equity and Inclusion Council wanted a visible sign saying, "You're welcome here." In today's world, so many of us feel isolated, marginalized, and unwelcome. There's nothing as demoralizing as not feeling wanted. This is unhealthy for the individual and for our society. And it doesn't have to be this way. Rainbow crosswalks clearly demonstrate that a hospital, a school, or a community is open and affirming to all the residents and visitors. At Main Coast Hospital, one patient told me when they saw the rainbow crosswalk that it was much easier for them to walk through our door. That person heard our message. My daughter's university, town of about 4,000 people, had a rainbow crosswalk. And when I saw it, I felt instantly that this could be a great place for her to be, knowing that the community supported diversity and had a welcoming attitude. I wanted that for my daughter. I wanted her to live in a place like this. I want Ellsworth to be a place like this. Finding ways to let people know that they're important and welcome is essential for the well-being of individuals and businesses in our community. For our hospitals, painting rainbow crosswalks was a low-cost, high-reward project, and it's been well-received and appreciated. So thank you so much.
Matt Quinn from Trenton. We're a little jealous of all those crosswalk talk. Our town's not big enough to have those yet. You guys are kicking ass. I love it. Don't let a few of these old guys kick you around tonight. Six hours ago, when this meeting started, there was a great idea. I think we need to ground the pavement down so we can let this thing last for years and years and years using the polytherry, your thing, heating thing? Paint the crosswalk, guys. Thank you.
Really quickly, I just wanted to add, some of you forgot to mention to the public, I think we sent that in a letter to you guys, but I wanted to make sure everyone knew about it. So we got a grant from Healthy Acadia to pay for all the costs of the crosswalk, not only for the paint supplies, but also for any labor that may need to be used to make it. So if, while the GSDA is certainly more than willing to paint it, if you guys want the Public Works Department to paint that crosswalk, we are willing to pay for that labor. And I thought that just needed to be mentioned really fast before we kind of close the public comments. Thank you.
Dan Chase, a United States Marine, sworn to defend the Constitution against all domestic enemies, including councilmen. Now, the best way to defend the Constitution is to stop people from becoming its enemies. That's why I'm here. They're talking about saying, "Oh, I see this and I get this message." Do you know what that means? Free speech. And you're looking to invade its propriety. The United States Supreme Court has said that for the state to enforce a content-based exclusion, it must show that its regulation is necessary to serve a compelling state interest, and that it is narrowly drawn to achieve that end. The state may enforce regulations of the time, place, and manner of expression which are content-neutral and narrowly tailored to serve a significant government interest and leave open ample alternative channels of communication. Public property which the state has opened for use by the public as a place for expressive activity is a second category. And the Constitution forbids a state to enforce certain exclusions from a forum generally open to the public, even if it was not required to create the forum in the first place. Content-based prohibition must be narrowly drawn to affect a compelling state interest. That is Perry Ed Association v. Perry Locals Administrators Association, Supreme Court, 1983. I'm gonna give this to one of you. I'm sorry, I didn't realize how many I'd need. And it's full of case law. Here's the thing, ladies and gentlemen. I can put up a flag on my house that says, "Gay pride! Gay suck!" I have that right because I am not in government. Government has to be content-neutral. You cannot provide a message that says, "We love gays," any more than you can put up a message that says, "We hate gays." And by the way, do you remember the gay 90s? I'm talking the 1890s, guys, when everybody was happy because it was great economic times. The homosexual community stole that gay word that used to have a different meaning. The rainbow, that's a promise from God not to flood the world again. They stole that, too. These symbols have more than one meaning. That's the whole point. And these words have more than one meaning. If you wish to take and violate your oath that you took, that's in Maine's constitution, to become a counselor, to become an enemy to the Constitution by violating the duty of being content-neutral, go ahead and put the crosswalks in. And don't be surprised if you find a suit against you for that. And if you don't find one, there should be. I don't care about it being for this group or that group. That's not my point. It's irrelevant what the group is. But if you put in "gay pride" in this crosswalk, I should be able to go to the next crosswalk and write, "God hates gays." Do you think that'd be appropriate? I don't. I don't think it'd be as appropriate either to say, "Gays are great," because that is protected speech. And being a public place...
That's your time.
You can't do that. You can't restrict.
May I, may I raise a bump up? No. Because, only because if I start doing that, then everybody will talk again and they'll get in trouble.
Hi, I'm Alex Stody. I have lived here in Ellsworth for about 10 years. And I am a senior in the Ellsworth High School. I am one of the lucky ones. I come from a very supportive family who have always been sure to tell me that they don't care who I end up with as long as I'm happy. And I have known for years that I'm lucky. I am lucky to have this community and be allowed to be part of it. There are many kids who don't have that. Many kids in our school who don't know, who don't, aren't part of this community because their families won't let them. I don't know what to say now. I have friends who are still afraid to fully come out to their family because they support one part, like, for example, they'll support their children being gay, but not trans, but they fit in both of those parts of the community. And they're afraid of what the consequences will be if they come out. I think that this crosswalk will spark even a little bit of hope in children. It's 1,000% worth it. There are, when I see the rainbow flag hung in one of the stores on Main Street, I, before I came out, I, that filled me with so much happiness because I knew that I, that's a place that I'm accepted. That's one place I don't have to fear going. And this will, this sidewalk will show that our government supports us and they're not going to discriminate based on who we are, who we love, and who we identify, what we identify as. It will show that we accept and don't hate them. To respond to, whoever was that fountain over there? The government doesn't support hate speech. And to write on a crosswalk from the government that, saying, "I hate gays," that is actually against the Constitution, I believe. It's not what the government stands for, as far as I understand. And this decision is up to you. It is, it all depends on how you want to represent the community. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I'm Marlena Ford. I've lived in Ellsworth for 20 years. I've been an educator for 22 years. And I know most of these kids from the time they were little, because I have three students who go to Ellsworth Schools. And I will keep it short. I'm a teacher. And last year, I was in a new school. And I hung up in my classroom the progress flag, which is a rainbow flag with a triangle that also includes blue, pink, brown, and black, to show progress towards a better time, but there's still things that need to be done. And it supports people of color, as well as the LGBTQIA+ community. I hung that in my classroom with a history of the flag and said nothing about it. I found a note on my desk and posted it with really bad spelling, really bad handwriting because kids have been typing way too much. And it said, "Thank you. I feel safe." And that's all it said. I had a student come to me this year, walked in my room and saw that flag in my new classroom, because now, you know, I have my own room now instead of having to move cart to cart like I did last year. And it's hanging up on my wall with the history of what the flag means. And I had students come to me and said, "I know that I can be who I am because I see that on your wall." They know they're safe when they walk in my room, no matter who they are, what their name is now, that it might not have been before, how they dress, where they came from, what their last name is, whether they believe in God or not. They know that I accept those kids as who they are and how they come. And all that was is a 3x4 piece of fabric on a wall. So having something as simple as some paint slapped on the ground in a safe manner and properly applied by DOT or whoever needs to do it in the proper way with the white and filled with color, with the right amount of flecks or not, it's a symbol. And the symbol is just as simple as someone saying, "I'm seen and someone was thinking of me." And unfortunately, there's a lot of kids and adults that have grown up and not felt that. And you think, oh, we shouldn't talk about this stuff with kids. It's something we should talk about in the home. Well, we do talk about things in school of, we have, you know, donuts with that, muffins with mom. We have those kids that don't have either of those, for whatever situation that is. We talk in kindergarten about families and people in the community, and there's kids that don't have families. And all their families may look different, but we still talk about them. And for many, many years, kids whose families maybe did not look the same as everyone else's, they were not represented. And they maybe didn't have mom to bring for muffins or dad to bring for donuts, but we still did it. And it's the time now for our community to step up and let these people know that they are seen and we are thinking of them.
Hi, my name is Bridgette Cutney. I'm the daughter of Mrs. Cutney, and I've lived in Ellsworth for 11 to 12 years. I think that this crosswalk is in support and with the Constitution because what does the Constitution say? All men are created equal. It's as simple as that. And what does a couple of colors on the ground mean in terms that they aren't equal? Like, you know, it doesn't make sense to me how some people think that this crosswalk can be so offensive. Jesus said, "Love your neighbor." Love thy neighbor, technically. And I am so proud of these people for having the courage to stand up and say these things because just the fact that having to say those things takes so much courage is a huge part of what is wrong with the world. Thank you.
I am Abigail Young. I am a junior at Ellsworth High School and I'm the president of the GSDA. And putting paint on the sidewalk is no more of showing favoritism than lighting up a Christmas tree at Christmas time, which we do. And if we can do that and the Constitution ensures separation of church and state, why can't we paint a rainbow crosswalk?
Hi, I'm Tara Young. I've been working in prevention for more than 20 years. Some of that has been in my 27-year military career. And I just, first off, wanna say I am so proud of all of these kids. I've been working with them for a couple of years and they are amazing. The first person that we know, that I know of, that was recorded saying, "Kids these days," basically, was Aristotle. It was like many, many years B.C. So people have been saying, "Kids these days," for the longest time. And anytime I hear that after, I have been, especially in the last two years after working with this group of kids, it just, I just, I'm just beside myself because I have never in my life worked with more amazing kids than I have in the last 10 years in Hancock County. I've worked with kids all throughout the county. And the dedication and passion and excitement that they've shown for this crosswalk project and for Pride Fest and all the work that they've done, they have put in so many hours and so much hard work. And they've learned so much about process and how to go about writing letters to boards and going and speaking in front of people. It's been amazing to watch them do that. And they've just, they've been so dedicated. In working in prevention, we look at evidence-based practices, what works to help kids stay mentally healthy and stay away from substance use while they're too young to be using any substances like alcohol that are, they're underage, or any substances that are illegal. And an evidence-based strategy that has proven to work time and again is getting kids involved in making change and doing beautification projects. It's an evidence-based strategy and these kids have been just so involved and so active. And I'm just so proud of everything they've accomplished. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Abigail Miller. And I'm here because a friend couldn't be here and wanted me to bring a letter to you. This is from one of your local Ellsworth businesses, and this is from a business in which this crosswalk would potentially impact the most. This is from Sugar Mags, from the location that our lovely group of students have picked out. This proposed crosswalk would be directly in front of their business. So from Sarah at Sugar Mags, she says, "The statement is on behalf of the Bodman family, owners of Sugar Mag Central. Sugar Mag Central is a retro candy store, old-fashioned arcade at Nodore Play Space. Our main entrance is located on Main Street. Currently, there are no painted crosswalks, no pedestrian signage, and zero safety roundable crossing..." roundable crossing pop-up signs. Our community, visitors, children, customers, et cetera, cannot safely cross Main Street anywhere. The proposed rainbow crosswalks will be directly in front of our business. The new crosswalks will provide financial relief to the city budget, as funding has been raised by our students and all M- Main DOT regulations have been satisfied by the materials and design. The paint that was used last year caused premature wear and tear, as it was thinner than previously used. Multicolored crosswalks outlined in white provide a bright, welcoming entrance to our entertainment, retail, and restaurant epicenter. Above all, we want our business to expand and continue to provide an amazing main experience for everyone. These crosswalks represent kindness, inclusiveness, happiness, and our reminder that Ellsworth wants you here. We are a community who understands that we are all in this together, that our children are important, and that their voices are important, and that everyone matters. We hope that with your votes tonight, you will demonstrate all of these values, as we choose you to best represent our little slice of heaven and not to exclude, but to welcome everyone in our community. Thank you for our time, Jesse, Sarah, Marguerite, and Fisher Boden."
Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Are you sure? Once I turn. All right, well, thank you. I, I appreciate all the comments and the manner in which they were conducted. So, I'll turn it back over to Counsel Hansen, and then we'll open it for council discussion.
We'll open it for council discussion, and I'll save my comments for when I make my motion.
Okay. Counsel Miller.
Well, I'm prior military also, and I don't feel like putting some paint on a sidewalk is going to violate my oath that I made. Uh, I, I don't, I didn't hear the suicide rate like I did last year. I know it's a lot higher. You know what it is?
It's in here.
Yeah, it's a lot higher amongst these kids than it is amongst other kids. And if some paint on the sidewalk is going to save one kid, I'm in. I'm in. Several other cities have painted these crosswalks and done informal studies, because they've actually had them up for a couple of years. Not, not only were they less safe, they were more safe. That's what the studies are showing. And they're also been, being kept cleaner, because people come out and actually take care of them. So, also, if you're going to be painting for a paint that's 25% higher now this year, I would like everybody to adopt, uh, raise the money and raise the money for the paint. That's all I have.
Counsel Captain.
So, we have two crosswalks at the school, one at the hospital, and then if this is approved, then there's one on Franklin Street at the parklet. Then what? Is there another goal after that?
I can respond to that in double, right? I don't know. Well, really, I guess the main goal of these crosswalks is to, of course, inclusion and acceptance of LGBTQ+ people in our community. And of course, bringing more business to downtown, which we saw a lot last year through our selling of masks and stickers in the local businesses. But, um, we've also done the Ellsworth Pride Fest, and moving forward, we're going to continue doing that as an annual event. Um, and we are also looking to hang our banners, um, again in June alongside the American flag. And I'm not totally sure where you're going, but that's kind of our plan for the next few years.
Okay, so I guess my question is, are we starting with one crosswalk this year and then another one next year, or is it just this one?
Our plan is kind of keep it here at Franklin Street. That'll probably be the last one that our, um, group puts down. Other groups may do more or whatever, but, um, that's kind of the one we're going to upkeep and repaint every year and make sure we have, um, the funding to do that. Yeah.
We've been so focused on getting this one crosswalk passed, that, no, we have not actually discussed additional crosswalks in the future. And I think because it does cost money and it involves fundraising and getting grants to, to upkeep it, you know, like, I don't know if it's realistic for a school group to do more than one, especially if we have other projects that we want to do.
So, I just want to make a couple of comments. First, my position hasn't changed from my vote the last time, in which I voted in favor of it. I would like to say that the worst thing we have going in our society is social media. And I would, I would urge individuals on all perspectives to use social media a little more responsibly. And because I think this allows us to have a discussion and have a dialogue and form understanding when we have differences. Social media doesn't do it. And quite honestly, on whether you're for or against this particular issue, that some of the, the name-calling and the way that that plays out really is, is in opposition to what is being suggested here. And it really is, that's the thing that tears communities apart. And so, I think conversation like this is, is what we need to do. And if you're sitting at your, well, I guess, see, this is my age. If you're sitting with your smartphone and you're responding, think twice before you comment or how you comment. Think about how somebody is going to take that and read it and understand that some, we can have differences of opinion. And even in, on this issue, um, you know, I've, I've seen some things in terms of because somebody was opposed to it, that somehow that automatically puts them in the category that they're biased and discriminatory. And that isn't the case. I know individuals who have sat here and had votes. Sometimes, this is a government, you talked about government process. Government is incredibly messy. Bureaucracy is messy. What's good is when it involves everybody. That's, that's what government really is at its strength. But sometimes we disagree, and sometimes we reach decisions, not because we're doing it for these alternative reasons, but because we have a difference of opinion. And that's where, um, I just hope as a community, we continue to build on this kind of discussion, rather than the social media kind of discussion that we've all seen and, and, and encounter. And then the last thing I would say is that I want to echo everything in terms of, um, all of you, um, in terms of, not because you're here for this particular issue, but you're impressive because of the way you've done it. Not only your courage in terms, you've heard everybody talk about your courage, but when you think, and when I think about in terms of young people being able to step forward and advocate, or step forward and do a, well, I don't know why you did a 15-page paper and not get credit for it. I'd go back to the teachers and get some credit for that, but that's the kind of stuff that's impressive. And you are showing what the future of Ellsworth is going to be like, and that's, that in and of itself is impressive. So, so thank you for, for being here, and thank you for advocating, but thank you for being you.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I was one of the, um, three people that voted against it last time. And over the last year and a half, to be honest, I haven't seen anything or heard anything that really changes my mind. I've seen many untruths from some of the people that are supporting you kids, from the adults. In most cases, I would take some of their advice with a grain of salt. And the reason I say that, let me, uh, let me read you a few things that, um, the counselors have gotten in the emails. From Amanda Clark, "And some of your colleagues are trying their best to recreate the town from Footloose. For God's sakes, no, there isn't a counselor at this table that's trying to recreate the town from Footloose. Get a grip." From Kristen Schaler.
I think it's Schlefer.
Okay. "The MDOT is responsible for testing and setting safety standards. They have stated without any doubt that rainbow or brightly colored crosswalks are safe. No, they have not. They have stated that in a 25 mile an hour or less zone, they are acceptable. They said nothing about safety. There's a big difference." On 312, Nick Navar, and this is one, this, this gets to the, the social media comments. "Will you be voting on the side of acceptance, inequality, or will you be voting on the side of hate and division?" So, if I vote against it, all of a sudden I'm on the side of hate and division? I don't have a thing against you guys, against you kids. I love every one of you. You did a great presentation tonight, and it took a lot of balls to do what you did. But it has, there is no hate and division involved in this. On 313, to Joseph Nabozny, "There are no safety issues involved." Really? It's a crosswalk. It's designed to get you across the street safely. For three years now, I've had an eye issue. Bright lights at night and I don't play well together in the sandboxes, especially on these, uh, crosswalks now that, that can barely be seen. I want to make sure that I can get across that street safely. To the young woman who said, "Have you ever seen anyone struggling to use a sidewalk?" Yes, I have. A gentleman over here with the cane, three times I've seen him walk across this short distance. Uh, three times that I've seen him almost fall to the floor. Be lucky that you have two strong legs and two strong eyes, all of you people. It isn't always going to be that way. On 227, Peter Leone, "Please don't hide behind safety issues. We all know that's not real." Bullshit. It is real. I have, I represent 8,300 people in this city. I can't take just one group of people and give them what they want and then cast aside everybody else. I have to weigh everything. I want to make sure people get across these streets safely. Don't let, ever let anyone tell you that safety is not a factor in this decision. That is just so wrong. It is completely a factor. On 32, Nate Hanson, calls veterans, veterans, Nate, a subset of our community. That was infuriating personally to me. Apparently, you have never, ever, ever knelt at the foot of a veteran's grave cleaning it, having a conversation with them, no matter how long ago they died. I've done it over 200 times. And to refer to them as a subset, if it wasn't, if it wasn't for the veteran...
You can sit up there and yell at him. But I can't respond to him?
Yeah, you can't respond to him. You can't respond right now. He's, he's responding to an email.
If it wasn't for the veterans of this country...
He's parroting my email. And he knows he's lying when he does it.
We're not going to get in... Listen, cut, everyone, please.
Does that include gay veterans?
Listen. You don't, listen, every, we gave everybody an opportunity to speak.
Respectfully.
Let's, let, let me finish, because the next thing I will say is that if we can't have this discussion, if it's going to be interrupted, and I understand your frustrations, but if it's going to be interrupted, we will clean up the, the room and conduct our business without anybody here, and I don't want to have that. So, please let the discussion happen, um, and, and we'll move forward, just like we, we listen to you. Please let, you don't have to agree with what's being said. All I'm asking you to do is listen. Thank you.
If it wasn't for the veterans of this country, we wouldn't be having this meeting tonight, having this discussion. There's a very good possibility of that. Never, ever, ever deface the name of the veteran. I also find it somewhat unusual that of all the comments here tonight, not one word was mentioned of the rainbow flags that were hung up for the month of June last year. I believe there were 10 of them. It could have been nine. So, did that make anyone safer? I don't know. I'm just, I, 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 I'm of the belief that putting paint down on a sidewalk makes it unsafe for the public at whole. And if there is a, uh, if it is approved, I would suggest that the crosswalk, that the black of the pavement and the white of the paint not be disturbed by having colors bump up to it. In other words, let's say the, the line is 18 inches wide, each, each line is 18 inches. Have your color blocks no bigger than two-thirds of that, or no, no bigger than two-thirds of the, of the whole white structure, and have it centered. At least that way, your white paint is going still, is, is going to still be contrasted against the black of the pavement and can be seen. The two crosswalks at the high school, uh, I'm sorry, at the, at the two schools, they're very, very difficult to see when it's raining, and they're very difficult to see after about six weeks that they've been down, because the dirt has gotten on them. The colors are somewhat, they're dark. They're using dark reds, dark blues. There's nothing bright about them. And so, after the sun gets on them, and after the vehicles go over them, and they get covered in dirt, they're extremely difficult to see. You can't see the white. The, in fact, the one at the high school, the white stripes is much narrower than the color blocks. It should be the other way around. You have to make safety a priority. Thank you.
Counsel Howard.
I'd like to apologize for the nasty tone that I just experienced.
So, one of the things I would ask all the counselors to, to think about, at least consider, um, as you're mulling over your vote, um, I think the location mitigates some of the safety concerns in, in that we're, we're looking at turning that area into a permanent parklet, which means that, uh, traffic will not be turning down that road anymore, and, um, it will, it will address a lot of the safety issues. So, I just asked, I, I hear the safety concerns, I ask you to consider that, um, with this particular issue, and, and perhaps there's a way to take some of the, um, issues about making sure that the, the white is standing out, um, and, and work collaboratively to, to design it to, to have something that, uh, that meets all of, of those conditions. So, I just put that up there for, for thinking.
Counsel Hansen.
It's been said before, but I just want to say again how proud I am of you kids. Came up with a thoughtful, caring, wonderful, fully-funded plan to show your peers that you're there for them and you care for them. And I think there's a real likelihood that that makes people safer. I'm unbelievably proud of you, and I'm even more proud of you because you came before this group and, and you were rejected by this group two years ago. And yet, you knew your plan had merit, you knew how important it was for your community, and so you persisted and you responded to the safety questions that were brought forth. And you're back here today, putting yourself in a position of being rejected again. And, uh, I just think that requires incredible courage and bravery. I know that when you came the last time, that is one of the reasons that inspired me to run for city council and be a part of this community, because I was really inspired by you guys. Of course, there's this argument that we shouldn't support you over other groups, but that really doesn't hold water, because we do support other groups. but that really doesn't hold water because we do support other groups in this town. We hang flags honoring our armed forces in this town, and the city manages and displays those flags. I'm not a veteran, but I love living in a city that celebrates its veterans. In October, we light the cupola pink to honor people who are fighting breast cancer. I'm not a breast cancer survivor, but I love living in a city that supports its breast cancer fighters. At Christmas time this year, the city funded erecting a Christmas tree to celebrate the Christmas season. I'm not a Christian, and I love that Christmas tree, and I love living in a city that celebrates the people who celebrate Christmas at that really wonderful time of year. There's no reason not to celebrate this group exactly the same way we celebrate all of those other wonderful groups. It's part of what makes this city great. This morning, I counted the number of emails that we got, that we city councilors received from constituents about rainbow crosswalks over the last couple of weeks. And there were 16 emails in favor of the project and three opposed to the project. That's just people from Ellsworth. I wasn't counting anybody outside of Ellsworth. Last fall, when I was running for city council, I was very outspoken in my support for the LGBTQ community in Ellsworth, and I received more votes from this, from voters in this city than any other candidate did. I am convinced that Ellsworth is a community that wants to support these students. We are a caring, inclusive, and welcoming city, and supporting this plan will confirm that. As I've been pondering the issue over the past several weeks, the phrase that keeps popping into my mind is that it takes a village to raise a child. And I think about the ways that my kids growing up here in Ellsworth have been formed by living in Ellsworth. And I really think that that saying rings true for me. It does take a village to raise a child. We are the village. These are our children. I hope my fellow councilors will join me in showing love and acceptance to these amazing students. And with that, I move to accept the GSDA proposal to paint a rainbow crosswalk on Franklin Street.
A second.
You have a motion and second. Further discussion? Councilor Kaplan.
So I do have to disagree with the rejection aspect. When I abstained last year, it was because there were some outstanding questions that I had had. I wasn't for or against rainbow crosswalks at the time. I just want to make that perfectly clear. And that as far as the military flags and the pink ribbons, those cover a cross section of the community. It doesn't matter what race, even what gender a person is, you can still get breast cancer. As far as military service, people of all sexual identities and races and socioeconomic status all join the military. We all lose someone. As far as the rainbow crosswalks, especially the one on Franklin Street, being unsafe, I don't see it as unsafe as it was made out to be last year, where the federal government was actually taking money away from certain communities that put the rainbow crosswalks in places over 25 miles per hour, and they told those communities, if you don't remove the crosswalk, we will withdraw that federal funding. That was my big bugaboo last year, knowing what budgets are like and being accountable to taxpayers. I am a big believer in equality. Not equity, but equality. Equality for everyone. I am from the Martin Luther King era. And one thing Martin Luther King said as far as race, he wanted to be judged not on the color of his skin, or in today's world, your sexual preference, your sexual identity, whatever, but by all the content of your character. And I say, let's go one more. Let's not judge anyone on any circumstance. Okay? I had the privilege of meeting, don't ask me all of your names again, but with Griffin, Wren, Elizabeth, Alex, Abby, and I forgot the name of the first one. I told you I was going to forget. But I met with them, and they spoke from their heart, and they moved me to tears. And I don't think any kid should go through, go through some of the things that these kids went through. You hit me right there. Nobody does that. So I'm not opposed to the crosswalks.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passes.
For the record, you now have to stay for the rest of the meeting. You can't just leave. But they're leaving anyway. All right, are we ready? Well, because they're going to be here for a while, so. We're going to, we're going to continue, so if you can, just, if you can. All right. Item 24, Discussion in Action to Request the City Waste Water Treatment Plant Only Accept Sewerage from Pipe-Connected Ellsworth Residents Effective June 30, 2022. Sponsored by Councilor Halloran. Councilor Halloran.
Can we give them just a minute?
I know, I'm, this is to move them along.
Folks, excuse me. You can please just move down into the gallery so we can have the rest of our meeting. Thank you. You staying, sir? I'm just looking for John.
He's right here. He was looking for you. One of the guys I was on.
Councilor Halloran.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I became a counselor, I was taken to city facilities around the city. And one of the things I noticed was how much outside sewer we were getting delivered by trucks that may or may not have been from outside the city. And that concerns me when I see the financial statements of that particular department in the red. Now admittedly, the financial statements that I have analyzed are from June of 2020. And I had, at a finance meeting, mentioned that maybe we should look into that. We have an asset there that might be being wore out quickly that we have to pay for. And when I saw so many outside trucks coming in, I'm like, wow, this, this is scary. I saw a trash pump perceived to be jumping the system a little bit, and I'm not saying that's the truth because I know nothing about this sewer. But when I see a facility like that, that was built for the city of Ellsworth, and it is being used by more than the city of Ellsworth, that makes me nervous when I saw so many trucks coming in there, wearing out the infrastructure and the financial statements that the accountant had prepared, that was paid thousands of dollars, says that there's a loss there. That concerns me. And therefore, I would like to see the city of Ellsworth accept sewer from the paying sewer customers in this enterprise account. Therefore, I bring that before you tonight for discussion and possible action.
Okay. My name's Mike Kares. I'm the Ellsworth Waste Water Superintendent. And so just like to really just lay it all out there for you guys so you can see.
Before you start, I guess I just want to jump in and ask a couple of questions of Councilor Halloran. I question whether this is the right forum for this initial discussion. I think there's a lot of information that should be vetted through the Finance Committee, that there's a lot of preparation work that should be collected to bring it back to this council, because I don't think we can do justice to this issue without having it vetted in that manner. I just, I think this is, it hasn't gone through that process where a committee can dive into it and get that information. And so that's, that's what I would suggest, is that we utilize that process to gather the information that we, that we need. Councilor Blanchard.
Mr. Chairman, I agree completely. Therefore, I would move that we table this indefinitely.
A second.
There's a motion to postpone indefinitely. Second discussion on that motion. Councilor Kaplan.
Is this something that could be looked at at budget time under, like when we're doing the budgets?
I can give you any information you need right now. Okay? The department shows a negative loss because of depreciation. Depreciation is a non-cash transaction. It's an accounting figure.
I just have to stop you because we have a motion.
Yep, sorry.
And a second on the table, and we're in discussion. Councilor Halloran.
To clarify, I did bring this to the Finance Committee, and it was kicked around, and I had suggested that perhaps we have an accountant look at this, CPA firm, because depreciation is a part of that loss. And I'm using round numbers, a half a million dollar loss with $300,000 depreciation. Those are round numbers, very round. Okay? And I did bring that before the Finance Committee, as you know, and it was not well-supported. It makes me nervous when I see all of this debt on this facility.
So I just, I don't want to interrupt, but right now, we, the motion that we have to debate is to postpone indefinitely, not the, the issue at hand. So at this point, the discussion has to be about the merits of postponing or not postponing this discussion. Okay?
Okay. Then if that's the case, I would like to say that I'm in opposition of tabling this issue and kicking it down the road. This is a real issue for the city of Ellsworth. I did go through the Finance Committee, and I think that this is the only forum, if the Finance Committee didn't want to hear it.
Councilor Hanson, and then Councilor Kaplan.
If we table it indefinitely, is that the proposal, table indefinitely? That would mean if it goes back to Finance Committee or another committee and more information is found out, it can come back here?
Yes, it can come back at any time. That, it just needs to be reintroduced on that, Council Kaplan.
And what's wrong with just hearing what he has to say and just, I'm trying to get to, so you're saying that you see trucks dropping stuff off, and then you also see a loss? And I don't understand what the problem is with just hearing it out.
That's your argument in terms of not postponing it? Any other comments about the motion on the table? Councilor Blanchard.
I guess I wonder, without those trucks dumping, if it would be a bigger loss? And so I don't know. Maybe, like you said, we need to get together and actually figure out what it would be without them trucks dumping, what it would be with them. What would wear out quicker if they weren't dumping, or maybe in the end?
So, so let's, we, let's act on this motion, which we have to do by Robert's rules, and then after whatever that decision is, we can take the next step in terms of where, where we go next, depending on what the vote is. But we have to, by Robert's rules, we have to act on the motion that's been put on the table. Any other discussions about the motion? All those in favor of postponing this item indefinitely? I have five, all those opposed to two, the motion passes. Now, in terms of where this goes, there can be a referral to committee if, if that motion wants to be made, where that committee, whatever it is, I'm assuming the Finance Committee, would then be tasked with vetting this issue and getting those questions answered, and then bringing that product back to this council, so that it's a directive from the council for that, for whatever committee's tasked with. So if somebody wanted to make that motion, that could be the next step in terms of what you're talking about. That's one possible solution. I only throw that out there as a potential option.
I would make that motion, motion to send this question to Finance Committee to discuss and bring back to city council.
Second.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstain? Motion passes. So the Finance Committee will be tasked with vetting it, so we'll set up a time, Finance Committee will set up a time to have you come, will gather the facts. When those facts are gathered, we'll put this back on the agenda and go from there.
I'm the next one up, so that's why I've moved.
Item 25, Discussion in Action to Request the City Waste Water Treatment Plant No Longer Dump Any Product in Ellsworth Effective June 30, 2023. Sponsored by Councilor Halloran. Councilor Halloran.
My comment, or my reason for putting this on is, I'm told that our contract ends with the contractor that we lured to town to have this composting site. It appears that the signed contract ends on June 30, 2023. The city has entered into an agreement to, with this company, in the industrial park to accept our sludge. I believe that we're contributing to our own problems there. I would like to see the city no longer dump and create all of these problems. I feel like we're, we're creating some of our own problems by dumping at that site. Therefore, I bring before the council tonight this motion to no longer dump our, is it sludge product?
I call it bio solids.
What is it?
Bio solids.
Okay. Bio solids in this city. Prior to that, my understanding is we were taking it to a landfill, a number of them, and that's why.
Actually, we were taking it to another compost facility.
Well, okay. Outside of Ellsworth? Okay. So I bring this before you tonight for discussion and possible action, to make sure that we stop contributing to our own trouble here in this town.
Mr. Chairman, I move to table this indefinitely. The contract with the company expires June 30.
The contract with the company expires June 30th, 2023. And if we don't have a contract, we can't dump there anyways. Looking at the lateness of the hour, what is the sense of even discussing this? When the contract expires, our right to dump there expires. So it's, it's, we already know that we can't dump there after June 30th, 2023.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Now we have a discussion on postponing this indefinitely.
So this will just, when it's time to renew the contract, it'll just come up in council anyway?
That would...
I'm sorry, ma'am.
When it's time to renew this contract, it would just come up in council anyway?
Yeah. I mean, we have a contract with Main Organics. Josh from Main Organics is here tonight. And yeah, that's correct. I mean, at this, at this time, it's a good possibility that the contract will not be renewed. But it's completely his business decision whether he decides that he would, whether, end the contract or come to, or put in a bid with the city to have another contract. And at that time, you guys would have the option to...
So Councilor O'Halloran, in terms of where we have a motion to postpone indefinitely, just wondering if, if you agree that perhaps, if this motion passes, perhaps having Mr. Harris present an alternative plan based on what he just said in terms of it's, it's going to expire and there needs to be an alternative, would that be something that he could come back to and we could then vet that issue at that time?
If you're asking my opinion, my opinion would be, everyone so far that has spoke on this issue, it seems that is assuming that we can't dump without a contract. Is that the truth?
Yeah. Yeah, I can't just take my stuff to Josh's side. Yeah, too bad Josh isn't dumping here anyway.
So I don't want to drift too far from the motion on the table, but that's... Any other comments about postponing this indefinitely? All those in favor of postponing indefinitely? All those opposed? One opposition?
Thank you.
Item 26, discussion in action to request the city of Ellsworth enforce the current odor ordinance by June 30th, 2022. Sponsored by Councilor O'Halloran.
Hi, my name is Lori Roberts. I'm the code enforcement interim officer.
Lori, can you just wait a second?
I can.
You got to turn it over to Councilor O'Halloran to introduce the topic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. That's fine. It's, it's 9:30, 9:35.
I bring this before you tonight. I'm not having a very good record here. But I'm here anyway, so here we go. It seems to me that everybody's scared to deal with this ordinance. And we've got a legal act, legal representation, I'm told, that says that it would be hard to enforce an odor ordinance. So I feel like if we need to put an end to this problem. And it's been going on for close to five years, maybe four years. Is that fair? Four to five years? Am I somewhere near right here? And at some point, we got to draw a line in the sand. And this needs to stop. These businesses are being affected by this. And I'm, I'm here tonight to say, whether it's tough to enforce or not tough to enforce, my understanding is it's an ordinance. And it's there for a reason. And my vote, or my suggestion, would be on June 30th, 22, to attempt to get this problem under control and enforce this ordinance.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilor Blanchett?
Given that Mr. O'Halloran has some business interest in this park via a retail display on the corner of that park, I would ask that, as far as discussion and action on this item, that he recuse himself because of that conflict.
May I comment to that?
Yes, you may.
Actually, it's the odor that brought me to that area. When I first brought this up, I had nothing there. And I have an overflow yard there now. Because I was dealing with everyone's complaint about this, I rented that spot for three months to put sold buildings in. There's no operation there. And it's the odor that brought me there, to be frank with you.
Operation or not, you still have some product stored there. That gives you a conflict of interest as far as this is concerned.
All right. So in terms of trying to get over, I guess that a couple of questions I have, and I'm sure you get to this, but I just wanted to throw them out in advance so you're thinking about it. One, I understand that the city regulates some of this with our ordinance, but some of this is also regulated at the state level. So if you could talk about that. And I'd also be interested in terms of the ordinance, what the ordinance says, and what the enforcement, what that means. What does that mean, the city, to enforce? And what are we enforcing and what have we done? Those, those are the kind of questions I have. Councilor Kaplan?
I'm just wondering, I have smelled the odor at times and it's, it really is overwhelming. But how do you differentiate the smell of the landfill, or not landfill, but the transfer station versus the smell of the compost facility? And I can only tell you that they do smell different, but how do you, it's, they're both in the same industrial park. So if you enforce it for one, how do you not enforce it for another?
And the answer is?
Well, one is licensed through the DEP, and that would be the compost facility. And again, our past responses to complaints, we had sent them to the DEP. And in meetings with our attorney, I just wanted to make sure that we were doing, going about it the right way. And the attorney suggested that they make, we make sure that they're following their operations manual that the planning board approved. And so with additional complaints that we received as of the beginning of this year, because that's when I met with the attorney, I have been going out, sometimes with Mike's, sometimes with other people in our office, at least once a week, or when we have a complaint. And I was able to schedule a meeting with Mr. Johnstone from DEP, who is now in charge of this. Mr. Secord has retired, who was in charge of this project and through the DEP. And his suggestions were, again, following the operations manual about when someone comes to complain that they, the compost facility hands them a complaint form so they can log what time it was. Was it the time that they were getting product delivered? Either the seafood, or was it the time that we were getting sludge delivered? All of those are supposed to be logged through his operation. And being able to either cross-reference as to what was happening. His other suggestion was that smaller piles, the air, are they arrows or how do they?
Windrows.
Windrows. These windrows of product are airing out. They should be smaller piles. And that would tend to not produce as big of an odor. And then when they go to turn them, again, it wouldn't produce as big of an odor. They're covered with chip, wood chip when they come. And they try not to turn them now, since we've received so many complaints. They try not to turn these piles when the wind is blowing. And they have a windsock there. They have pretend falcon there, which the seagulls don't like. And as we've been going out and they're doing these procedures, it doesn't smell as bad. I can't even smell it when I'm going down the Mariahville Road or going down the industrial road. I can only smell it when I get onto the site. And I'm right there where they're doing the work. And Mr. Johnstone also suggested that, that they compost maybe the Jackson Lab shavings to also be able to put on top like they would the wood chips when the product arrives, to lower the smell. So I, he, Josh says he can regulate when the seafood comes. He can, his son suggested maybe putting the Jackson Lab shavings in a room, in a section where there's a blower, which blows air through it to keep it, to get it going. I don't know much about...
To speed up the composting process.
So what, all that, with all that that you've talked about, if, if there were some motion that said that the city of Ellsworth needs to enforce the current odor ordinance, what would be different than what's happening now?
They, all we could do is fine them.
And what, what does that look like?
Well, it can be up to $100 a day to $200, $2,500 a day. And each day is a new violation.
And what, what would that be subject to in terms of what would qualify that? What would, how would you determine a violation of odor? What, what standard is used for, to measure that? So that, what would, what would create a $100 fine?
It's not supposed to cross the property line, is that what you mean?
Well, I don't know what the, I don't know how you interpret the ordinance. I'm trying to understand if, if, if there's this enforcement that we're not doing, what does that look like? Is all I'm trying to...
I would have to consult with the attorney about how to approach a fine. We've never fined anybody through the Ellsworth code enforcement office.
So to also answer your question, we don't have the technology to quantify the odor. And by the way, at this point in time, neither does the DEP, which he was very clear about saying. And they don't have anybody qualified to conduct the odor testing if they did have the equipment. And so I don't think that it's proper to try and enforce an ordinance based on subjectiveness.
That's what the question...
I think it's very clear that you do need a standard to say, let's first example, say hydrogen sulfide. Hydrogen sulfide is what you smell when you smell sewer. People rot an egg or that's hydrogen sulfide. There are meters that can detect the levels of hydrogen sulfide in the air and tell you, hey, you're not supposed to go about 10 parts per million and you're at 50 parts per million. And so therefore, you're violating. We don't have that. We don't have that capability. State rate at this point in time doesn't have that capability. And so that's what makes enforcing the odor ordinance particularly challenging, as well as, as was mentioned by Mrs. Kaplan, if you're going to do it for one, then you have to be consistent and do it for all. So now we're going to talk to our transfer station. Now we're going to talk to main shellfish. Now you can even talk to the wastewater plant if we haven't been putting out ours like we used to on Water Street. And so that was the discussion that was had with the attorney, to basically say, you're opening up a can of worms and you are not set up to be able to fulfill the obligations they're going to put on yourself to enforce it. That's what I hope.
So I want to be clear that, that I'm after eliminating the odor, okay? I'm, I'm not about, and I think my past experience and comments here would be very clear, that I said from the beginning, I'm not after making someone's life difficult. I'm not after hammering somebody with a fine. What I'm after is the people to be able to drive by that and not call and tell about this odor. And it seems that if we're going to have an ordinance on the books that's not enforceable, then let's get rid of it and smell up Ellsworth.
Do you want to talk about that?
But I kind of want to make this a broader discussion as well is, we've run into, since my time on the council, other types of issues that are very difficult to subjectively measure. Noise. Having businesses that, that are located in residential in settings, but they're, they're, we are allowed, they're zoned appropriately and they, they're there. Parking has become a question. And this is, quite honestly, the, the challenge that I think we face as, as members of the city council when these issues come before us, that the city faces when the issues come before. And, and quite honestly, the discussion about, we talked about earlier about regulations and too many ordinances and not being business friendly. Where do you draw the line? Being, there are ordinances for a reason. And a lot of times, they're very subjective to get towards a goal, to get to a place when there seems to be an issue, to try to work it out and to try to find solutions, which is what I hear that you've been trying to do, is to find solutions and it's not hard and fast. And I think this is the issue. I don't think there's, I don't think the ordinance is not being enforced. I don't think there's, I agree, if, if, if we can't measure it, then perhaps we change it somewhat. But, but enforcing, enforcing it, I don't think is an option. I don't think there's anything there to enforce. I think it's incredibly, you just said it, it's subjective. And so if we're going to be business friendly, let's not say, okay, tomorrow when you drive down the road and you sniff, it's, okay, that's a $500 smell versus, no, that's a $2,500 smell. I'm not in favor of that kind of process. So I, I think we have to recognize the, the subjective nature of this. Councilor Kaplan and then Councilor O'Halloran?
So you said, you know, what's the use of having an ordinance if you're not going to enforce it? But at the same time, you said you've never fined anyone?
Through the code enforcement.
No, we would, we would try and get more, I, if you were violating the ordinance, I would try and work with you, send you a letter if you're not going to comply. You know, we're looking for compliance. I'm not looking to fine people. So we would work with you to comply with it.
And then additionally, I mean, you can, I, I think that the way you could measure it is in its impact on neighboring properties. For example, if somebody has upholstery, for example, that they can no longer sell because it has those flavors in it, if you will. That would be a way that you could measure it as far as impact to neighboring properties, physical properties. A smell going through the air is, you know, if it's temporary, just over a course of an hour, that's not that big of a deal. But if it's day in and day out, and I believe it actually, I smelled it more in the summertime. In the wintertime, some of those moist products are frozen, even though they're turned, they are frozen and that mitigates some of that odor. So I would say that you'd have to look over it, over a course of months to see if that's impacting it. The other question I would have is, you know, the bio solids that we're bringing there, do they contain PFAS? What's that doing to the water table? There is a river nearby. You know, is that PFAS? Are there PFAS products in, in the sludge that is being brought there?
Actually, I'm glad you asked that question, which is unrelated to the odor. So do you want me to answer?
No.
That's a really quick one.
If you can do it under 10 words.
No. So our stuff is tested. Like Josh tested. 2020, 2021 results came back. And our PFAS levels are well under the established limits set by the state, to the point where you could take the bio solids that are produced from main organics, spread it on the same piece of property 100 times and still not meet the minimum screening level. And then there's three different chemicals. So two of the chemicals 100 times. The third chemical, you'd have to spread it maybe 80 times before it would actually meet the minimum level. And so we're one of the few communities that can say that our stuff is very low-level PFAS contamination.
Councilor Blanchett?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask the chief of police a question. If you see a car speeding on High Street and you stop and write him a ticket and take him to court and you have to go testify, you have no equipment. You just say, no, he was going too fast. Is that going to hold up in court? Thank you. If we have no way of measuring or testing, the state has no way of measuring or testing, why, why are we going on and on and on? why, why are we going on and on and on about this? We have no way to support any kind of supposed odor, odor ordinance of Ellsworth.
Council Wyman.
Can I ask Mr. Wellman a question? Okay. Um, are you currently doing everything you can to keep the smell down?
Yes, we are, and that's why I stood up here. I just wanted to tell everybody that we haven't had, when she gets a complaint, usually I get a complaint 'cause it's emailed or whatever. Um, and we haven't had any for probably a month and a half, 'cause we've been doing all kinds of different things. We haven't, we, with the winds blowing towards the neighbors, we don't do anything. If the wind's blowing towards the north, okay, there's flip piles, there's screen, let's go at it. Um, we've been working nights, we've been working weekends, we've been working Sundays just to make things happen, 'cause our, our busy season's coming up to sell the compost, it's springtime. So, we've been doing all kinds of different things to make it better, 'cause we don't wanna be a pain to the neighbors, we don't wanna cause you guys problems, we just wanna do business. So, we're doing everything that we can, and we're actually working on some other things with the, um, USDA Wildlife Management for the birds, we're working on some different things with them. Um, so, you know, I just wanted to let you guys know, we're trying everything to make it work for everybody. Um, yeah, so.
And you, you understand where everybody's coming from too, right?
Totally.
I mean, it does smell, so.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, it, the, the product smells sometimes coming in, so as soon as it comes in, we're, we're mixing it. Mixing it and covering it, and like Lori said, some of the, um, ideas that the DEP had, you know, we're using those ideas as well. We're studying it, we're, we're doing everything that we can to make it work.
Council O'Halloran, do you want to turn your agenda item into a motion to see where it stands?
I do not. I, I'd like to ask another question, if I may. So, um, it, it appears that, um, you are really tackling this issue to solve some of the neighbor problems.
Right.
Some of the commuter problems.
Yes.
Some of the other problems. So from the time we started until, uh, when I first brought this up, this complaint that when I got elected, everyone come at me about this. You think you're a better neighbor today than you were three months ago?
I do, but one of the things is people don't understand with the compost process, you get an odor, and there might be, you know, multiple odors, but it takes time to take care of those odors. It doesn't happen like that. It takes, it could take months to take care of the odors. I mean, you can cover everything, but it, it can just, it could be, it's, it can be complicated. It can be complicated, 'cause if you have a pile that is going anaerobic and you just cover it, well eventually, you gotta dig into that pile and remix it, and if you're doing that while you're mixing it, all of a sudden, the wind blows towards the neighbors. So what we do now is we email the DEP, Roger Johnstone, we tell them what we're doing, hey, we're gonna screen today, we're gonna mix today, we're gonna do this today. If you get a complaint, we just wanna let you know that this is what we're doing and we're gonna do it when the wind isn't blowing towards them, but every now and then, as you guys all know, the wind changes. So.
Absolutely, but it seems to me that you folks, from what I'm hearing tonight, is, is it's a better place than it was.
It is.
And it will be worse in the summer?
It'll be better. I'm hoping.
The odor will improve in the summer?
There'll be less odor.
Less odor?
Yes.
Because they have no place to send compost right now, nobody needs it. You know, in the summertime is when they're getting rid of their product. Right now, they're just accepting. Nobody wants to buy.
And we're screening, and we're mixing, and we're, you know, we're processing.
Would, would the compost help my wife from killing all the plants?
Yes, yes. You get free compost.
Oh, no, I can't do that. Don't do that. Now I have to recuse myself. I'm not voting on this. Ah, that's a trap.
If, if I may, Council Hamilton, I, I think one major difference, um, between now and three months ago is standing at the podium right now. And three months ago, there was very little communication between the city and the property, uh, the business owner, um, and now, and DEP. And now there's a much more active cooperative atmosphere. Uh, we're engaging with the business owner, the business owner is engaging with us, DEP is involved, and we're working together collectively to try and resolve the issue. Uh, three months ago, there was very little communication. When we got a complaint, as Lori said, we forwarded on to the DEP, and DEP would do god knows what with it. Mr. Wellman would occasionally hear complaints himself. Uh, but now that I think we've engaged, he certainly, uh, has been respectful and responsive to, you know, to the complaints and to the issues. And I think as we continue to work with him, work with the business, work with the DEP to come up with ways to mitigate, not eliminate, 'cause that's really not an option-
Right.
-but to mitigate the smell, um, I think that that's gonna be a win-win situation for, for everybody. And I think that's what the major improvement has been over the last three-plus months.
Council Kaplan, then Council Wyman, then Council O'Halloran, you boom, boom, boom.
Would we entertain tabling it for 120 days to see how they do over the coming months as we go into summer?
Mr. O'Halloran would be a good one to answer that if he'd be willing.
Well, I would, uh, if there's progress being made, um, I would, um, support tabling it for longer. Because the last thing we want is to clobber a business. Um, but the same thing that we want is, um, we want the smell factory to, I want the smell factory to disappear, um, and I know a lot of the neighbors do. And, um, now, does it have to disappear totally? I don't think so. But if we're improving it, I'm, I'm game for revisiting this, um, six, 12 months, as long as there's a, a game plan, uh, in place here. And it sounds like, to your credit, that suddenly everyone's working together, which I think is really what we want. Um, we, you know, we want a win-win for everybody. We don't wanna clobber you and-
Right.
...help the businesses in the park, or the residents driving by. Or, I guess there's quite a few residents, uh, in the area that have complained too.
Council Wyman.
Are there other places that do the same exact procedure? Like, what towns have those places where I could go and just kinda-
Smell.
You know?
Smell around.
See if they're doing something differently.
Uh, Lincoln, Lincoln Wastewater Treatment does sludge. I went there, I went there multiple times.
Are they near the beaten path, or are they?
Uh, they're kinda set down below, but they've had odor complaints. They've had, you know, from time to time, you know, what they're, what they're composting naturally smells, so.
Uh, there are places that really just don't have any, 'cause like, um, by Harvard.
It's not a compost site, so it's a wastewater treatment facility.
So they have none, 'cause they used to, but they don't-
They got rid of it.
They cut us.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering, because I never heard of any complaints from there.
Yeah, but yeah.
I've actually loaded stuff there myself, and I didn't really-
So just, just so, sir, so, so some history for you, there was a, there was another compost facility, a much bigger compost facility called Soil Preparation. Soil Preparation was shut down because they didn't know I wanna comply with.
Okay.
But then there's an even, the biggest one in the state is, is Casella, and it's called, which is called New England Organics, uh, who we used to bring our stuff to in unity. And, um, they have been in operation for many, many, many years. And, you know, they, they're probably the most comprehensively operated place that there is, but they too still have dealt with occasional odor issues.
From time to time, it's, it's gonna happen.
Council Kaplan.
So you said Lincoln, is that why they call it Stinkin' Lincoln?
No.
Different reason.
But, uh, no, seriously.
I, I think that it would be beneficial.
So Council Ca- Kaplan and then Council Blatchett.
So would you be amenable to a, to postponing this for a year?
Absolutely. I, I just want an endgame for the, the people in the community.
People for a year?
I'm, I'm game for that.
Could we make a motion on that?
Yeah, and just for the, right, the, we don't have to even take any action. If, if, we don't have to have a motion, we can just let the agenda go, and, and if you feel like you wanna bring it back in a month or a while, you can always do that, but if there's-
I'm happy, I don't mean to-
No, no, no.
Uh, I'm, I'm pleased that we're here having this conversation and hearing about progress. Uh, no, I just want an endgame here to this whole thing. Um, it is, is an endgame. Progress doesn't happen overnight, and if, if everyone's working at it, and to your credit, as you said three months ago, that wasn't happening, let's let it go.
Council Blatchett, did you? Okay.
Next.
Moving on. Item twenty-
Thank you.
Item 27, Discussion and Action to Request All City Departments Remain Open Regardless of Weather, sponsored by Council O'Halloran.
I want to bring this to this board's attention, that, um, I've seen City Hall closed during perceived snowstorms and weather, and it's, it's on a safety, uh, platform each time that, um, to keep our employees safe. And I, I'm struggling with that. I'm not against the employee taking the sick day, personal day, day off because of the slippery weather, but I am, I struggle with, the people that have an inside job don't have to come to work. Um, they close City Hall, and the people like the fire, the police, um, and public works have to work in the way. And I'm not against individuals making a decision that the roads are too slippery and take the day off, but I, I am against living in Maine and closing City Hall, having half of our crew work and half of our crew not work, and the crew not working has an inside job. Therefore, I would like to see that be an individual employee's choice, not a management decision.
Council Kaplan, and then Council Blatchett.
I think that the road crews would prefer to have as few people traveling the roads while they're trying to clean them as possible. I mean, I see your point, but I think that the fewer people on the roads in inclement weather, the better. And then if we say, look, you're not gonna get the day off, then we're forcing people, more people on the roads, which could lead to more accidents.
Council Blatchett.
This is inane on its face for a city councilor to propose that all city employees must show up regardless of the weather, putting their life at danger, putting themselves on the road, putting other people on the road at danger also, is one of the dumbest, damnedest things I've ever heard, and I move to table this indefinitely.
See, have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Now, discussion on postponing indefinitely.
Just like to comment, if I could, that I just heard that I was forcing people to come to work. That's not my goal. My goal is-
Is that a discussion on the motion?
Can I finish?
No. Is that a discussion on the motion?
The motion is to postpone indefinitely, so let's, yeah, we have to, we have to discuss that motion at this point.
I would like to, um, discuss the motion, but I don't think that we should be calling any motion or anybody's thing that they brought forth dumb or inane. People bring forth things-
I didn't say the person was, I said the proposal was.
Any, well, any proposal, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's dumb or inane, it just means that this is something a councilor felt, and now we're determining whether we're gonna postpone indefinitely. I'm not opposed to postponing indefinitely, but I am opposed to calling any motion or any proposal dumb or inane.
Any other comments on the postponing, Council Kaplan?
I'm in favor of postponing it mostly because I don't, I didn't look in the charter, but I don't wanna be the one who decides that. Uh, I don't want the city council to be the one who decides that, so I will support the postponement of the item.
And I, I, I would agree with that. I think there, there's some personnel issues related to the charter in terms of where our line begins and ends with city employees, and I'm also concerned about, um, we have multiple unions and multiple union contracts, and some of this is, is definitely embedded in those contracts, and I would want to know much more about those two issues before taking any action, um, on that. So I, I, I agree. I, I think there may be a need to collect some information, and if there were, that information were available, I, I, I would certainly feel more comfortable discussing it, so, um, I, I'm also, that's where I'm with postponing it. Any other?
So, is somebody gonna gather the information?
Well, we can talk about that after this, after we resolve this motion that's on the table. All right. See no more? All those in favor of postponing indefinitely? All those opposed? One opposed? Motion passes?
Could I make one comment now that the motion is over? My comment, I don't wanna force employees to come to work, I want them to be able to make that choice. And I heard my fellow counselor put a few words into my mouth that I didn't care for, and I simply think that, and, and, fine, we've, we've talked about it and it's over, but I simply think that leaving that decision to the employee, um, when we're asking half of them to come out and not the other half, again, if, if they feel they don't wanna come, call in and don't come. But closing City Hall, um, perhaps we ought to give some money back to the taxpayers if we're gonna do that.
So, um, we'll move on. I, I'm gonna make one general comment as chair, um, and, and not addressing this to any one person, and I include myself in this comment. I think one of the things that we really should look at, and to your point, Council Kaplan, is, um, how we discuss issues, both in terms of responding to each other, but also how we respond to members of, um, city staff, um, and how we come across and present ourselves. I, I don't think we're representing collectively, um, the way that we want to as a city council. And I think that we can, we can choose our words a little bit better, um, in all directions and, and have, um, conversations that we can disagree, um, but I, I think how we choose to portray either each other or, uh, staff is, is something that we should just bear in mind going forward. So that's, that's all I'll say about that. Item 28, Discussion and Actions to Allow Non-Ellsworth Residents That Utilize Ellsworth Schools Be Allowed to Participate in the Municipal School Board Elections, sponsored by Council Kaplan.
So I was asked by some, um, non-residents actually, uh, to sponsor this because they have children that attend the Ellsworth school system, uh, and they feel frustrated that they don't have a voice in choosing who makes decisions that affect their children. Um, how it would be implemented is problematic because, you know, if somebody has multiple choices of where they go to school, does that mean that if, if they have a kid at, uh, MDI and a kid at Ellsworth, do they get a vote in each one? Well, that's something for other municipalities to decide. Um, but I think that at least allowing them to have a voice in those, uh, processes, um, and how, you know, whether or not it would be to have a collective board member that represents outlying communities, or if they got to participate in choosing representatives from Ellsworth that make decisions that affect their children, especially since they do pay to, they do pay taxes, and a portion of their taxes goes to the tuition that pays for their children to go to school. Uh, I think that the citizens, um, is anybody here? Yes, you would ask me. So I think that the citizens could probably speak.
So, so let me, well, let me, let me just upfront, so I can be very clear. Robert's rules and the chair, um, I cannot entertain and will not entertain any motion that violates law. This would be an illegal act, we are not an RSU, we, we don't combine, and it is illegal for someone from a different municipality to vote in another municipality election. And that's what we would be endorsing, we cannot do that. So there is no motion that will be made that I will accept. Now, as the council, you can overrule the chair in that case if you, if you think that that's an error, um, but I'm just being very clear on the front end before we even go down that road of discussion. I, I, I think it's, it's not going to happen as a motion unless, um, the council overrules it, because it's illegal. It can't happen. Council O'Halloran.
Could we have the discussion?
What's the purpose?
That wasn't my question.
I, I was-
My question is, can we have the discussion?
And I'm asking what the purpose was. Why would we do that? I mean, can blow your eyes, but-
The purpose would be to allow those that have no voice currently in their own students' education to have at least a voice- education to have at least a voice, at least hear them out. Even if we can't do anything, we can at least let them be heard.
Council Miller.
Ellsworth residents have already voted on this subject and voted overwhelmingly against any such discussion. It was four to one. It was four to one. Our charter also states that in the event the city withdraws from an RSU, which we did, the five members of the board will be elected by voters of the city.
Council Hanson.
Can I make a motion to table indefinitely this topic, since it's illegal and there can be no motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Council Kaplan.
So I guess my question is, in fairness, if a resident has a student, a resident of an outlying town, and there's several.
We've, I've got to stop you. We have to debate the motion, the motion on the table, so the discussion is about the motion to postpone indefinitely.
Okay, so you're, you're taking away my voice now.
No, I'm following Robert's rules, which we all agree, that's what we follow. I'm following Robert's rules. That's all I'm doing. If the vote doesn't.
You're not even entertaining hearing discussion, you're just.
Council Kaplan, let me, let me provide some clarity, so that you understand the Robert's rules and you can do your own research. When there is a motion and a second, we have to have discussion and debate on the motion that lays on the table, which does. There is no other motion that is on the table, there's no other motion that takes precedent. I have to follow that. We have to dispose of that motion first. Once that is resolved, I am happy to move it forward, whatever the decision is, which is made by the council, not by me. I'm only following the procedures of Robert's rules. That's what we agreed to, that's what we follow. I can't change that. It's not arbitrary, I can't some days say, yes, chair, okay, I'll follow this rule, I won't follow that. That's the motion, and that's the discussion. Is there any other discussion on the, on the motion to postpone indefinitely?
Yes, as I started to say, without having this discussion and just tabling it indefinitely, how do you suppose someone who has a student who attends the city of Ellsworth School has a, has a choice in who makes decisions that affect their children's lives? That was my question.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if you're taking.
Any other discussion on postponing indefinitely?
I think we can postpone indefinitely, and I'm just trying to think about the rules, because it would be illegal to move forward with any motion, and the people who live in outlying towns do have, do have choice about their children's schooling.
They do.
They already do.
They can go where they like.
I disagree, because they don't have a choice in who represents.
Can we vote on the motion, please?
Any, Council Lyons, do you have a?
Not yet.
All those in favor of postponing indefinitely? All those opposed? All those abstaining? I don't know what to think.
But I did want to say something.
What, how are you going to vote? You've got to vote one way or the other.
All right, so I say this to postpone indefinitely.
You're in favor?
About the pot.
Yes. Motion passes.
But I do want to say something. I believe this came about because of parents who, I think, went to a school board meeting and absolutely were not heard in any way, sort of matter, so they relate to me, and they wanted to be heard. And I guess, so I don't know if maybe we should take more time when we're talking with parents and maybe listen to them. That's just I have to.
Item 29, Executive Session Pursuant to One MRSA Section 405.6 for Personnel Matter.
Do we want to hear the citizens?
I think we can table.
Is the motion going to executive session?
Second.
All those in favor of going executive session? All those opposed? One opposed? So council, all of them, if you need, how many? I'm just, sure.